We're going to resume the meeting. For those who have arrived, I want to welcome you to the August 25th meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. If you could check your cell phones and make sure they're off or muted, I would appreciate that. I'd like to have the commission members introduce themselves on that and start with Susan.
Susan Graham.
Good morning, Stan Galagaski.
Good morning, Tom Hutchison.
Good morning, Ted Gamboge.
Good morning, Tom Riley.
Good morning, Butch Tracy.
And my name is Don Michaelman. I'd like to welcome the mayor attending here and council members Moore, Tenney, and Montoya on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know Mr. Montoya has left following some legal advice from his counsel. As part of the open meeting law statute, we cannot have more than a majority of the council sitting in on this meeting. So we're going to keep a close eye, make sure no one else wanders in.
What we're going to be doing on this is we're going to take two sign packages first because we're going to be having a lot of interest, I think, in item D on here, and I want to allow enough time for everybody to have their ability to speak to the commission members here. And I'll be talking more about that when we get to that particular point. But just to keep you up to date on what we're doing here. The first item on the -- whoops, let me get back to my speech I have to make ahead of time on this. This is a public, open public hearing and being taped and recorded and videotaped by the city. The proceedings are being televised by representatives of the public media, the public local cable and/or radio stations, and may be available for rebroadcast. The number of commission members present is seven. It will require a majority of those present to pass a motion. As some individuals may be attending this meeting remotely, all parties wishing to be heard, including commission members, are required to state their name prior to speaking in order to ensure accurate minutes. Members of the public when called upon are required to state their name and address for the record so we may know who is speaking and be able to contact them later at a later date if necessary. First item on the agenda is the minutes for the August 11th, 2022. Are there any corrections? If no corrections, is there a motion?
Move to approve the minutes.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Butch Tracy, a second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, Kaylee, would you call the roll?
Yes, and just a reminder, when you make a motion, state your name as well.
Oh, I'm sorry.
For the record. It's okay. I'll forgive you. Butch Tracy.
You're very gracious of you.
Butch Tracy.
I approve.
Tom Riley.
Approved.
Tom Hutchison.
I approve.
Susan Graham.
Abstained since I was not here.
Noted. Stan Galagaski.
Approve.
Ted Gamboge.
Yes.
Don Michaelman.
Approve.
The motion passes 6-0.
The next item on the agenda is CSP 22-002: Consideration of a Comprehensive Sign Plan for Calvary Chapel of Prescott for a new digital monument sign at 2311 East State Route 69. Property owner is Calvary Chapel of Prescott. Applicant is A&amp;B Sign Company, APN 112-05-024H. George?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. This is a request for a conference of sign plan. I'm going to move through this relatively fast. Obviously, we have a lot of folks here. Most of them probably aren't for the sign package. The applicant is here, though. We do have the applicant to answer questions if you have any questions of them. The location is -- I'm going to move forward to that -- is on State Route 69. This location is existing church complex. There are a number of buildings that make up the complex, and as a result of the multiple buildings and the multiple uses on the site, they qualify for what's called a conference of sign plan. That means that they can get more signage than would be allowed strictly by code if there are conditions that benefit the city and the public as part of the review process, and I'll touch on those in just a moment. The standard allowance for an individual single -- or commercial sign is 48 square feet for a monument sign. They're requesting a new monument sign with 40 square feet of digital signage and an additional 35 of standard nonchangeable identification. And I'll show you picture that in just a moment. Property is zoned, business regional, very typical along a major roadway such as State Route 69. This is a portion of the property, just to show you where signs are now. So there are a couple of existing signs. There's an existing sign -- let's see if I can get my mouse pointer up here. There we go. There's an existing sign here that contains a digital element that would be replaced by a proposed new sign here, and this sign will have better visibility for traffic on the roadway. The wide setback here is because the actual property line is somewhere right along here, and the remainder of that space is owned by Department of Transportation ADOT. A view of the property, just to give you an idea of what's out there. You can see there's a fairly significant highway frontage along there. The existing sign has a digital component, which is this piece, and then the remainder is fixed, and it's 78 square feet under a conference of sign plan. So the request today amends that sign plan by removing this sign and replacing it with this sign. So this sign has this area as a changeable copy, electronic changeable copy, this area as fixed signage. So you can see the difference, the 40 square feet here, 35 here. This is not an atypical request. It is not out of the ordinary. The only thing that's substantially different than the previous sign is the height of this sign is proposed to be 20 feet. The other sign was approximately 12 or 13 feet tall.
George, real quick, I have a request to speak loud into the mic because of the other room we have going.
Okay.
It's not carrying very well. And all the commissioners as well. Speak extra loud.
I have a hard time speaking loud. I'll just talk closer. The request before you is the modification I showed you on the first slide. Staff believes this is appropriate, given the high volume of traffic on the roadway, the automatic setback distance away from the road because of ADOT's ownership of that large swath of undeveloped property, and we support the request to approve the conference of sign plan for Calvary Chapel. If you have questions, I'll be happy to answer any of those, and we do have the applicant here who can help.
George, didn't we look at this?
We did.
A year or so ago?
A little over a year ago, they came in for the previous sign under a conference of sign plan. So again, they're proposing to amend the sign plan approval they got last time to remove that sign and replace it with this sign.
So they just don't like the old sign?
I would leave that up to the applicant's representative to tell you whether they like it or not. This may be a decision by committee situation.
Any other questions for George?
I have a couple. Compare the square footage on the new sign to the old sign.
The square footage of the actual signage of the new sign is 78 square feet. It's approximately the same square footage.
Okay. And secondly, the old sign was visible from both directions. Is the new sign visible from both directions?
It is. So what we're showing you here is one side of a double-sided sign. This profile view shows that there are panels on either side of it, so what you see here is reflected on the opposite side. So whether you're eastbound or westbound, you'll get the same message and the same sign.
Thank you.
Other questions for George? Is the applicant here? Sir, would you have anything you want to present to her?
No.
I have a question for you, though.
All these people are here for your sign. They're ready.
And they don't like it.
This is part of your free advertising, okay?
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
The electronic part of the sign, how often will that change? Is there a time limit on it?
Yeah, there is. In the ordinance, I believe there is regulation as to how many seconds each message has to be on there.
We have by code a limit of not more than one change every 30 seconds on the sign. So it will not be motion. It won't look like it's moving. The message can change once every 30 seconds.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anybody else have a question for the applicant? Thank you, sir.
I do, actually. You just replaced the previous sign, right? It's been a few months now, right?
Yeah, we did not do that to work. There was a company out in the valley that did that, and they just are not pleased overall with how it came out, so.
I understand. Thank you.
No other questions? Thank you, sir. You may be back up shortly again.
Thank you.
All right. Is there a motion concerning this application?
Do you want to see if anyone from the audience has any interest in commenting on this?
Trying to get on with the meeting here.
Understood.
Any other comments concerning this particular agenda item? Anything from the other rooms? I don't think we will, but, okay. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, Tom.
I'd like to motion that we approve CSP 22-002.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Can I -- before we get too far --
Tom Riley, a second.
Before we get too far down the road, do you want to have your motion include the stipulation that the sign be turned off one hour after closing of business or by 10:00 PM, whichever is later?
We put that language in, but it's actually in our code that requires it. So this for clarification.
Look at you, you know more than I do. All right. Thanks. I'm just reading the thing.
Yes, if we need that, fine. If we don't.
Apparently, we don't need that. It's applicable whether you include it in the motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, Kaylee, would you call the roll?
Yes. Butch Tracy.
I would approve.
Tom Riley.
Approve.
Tom Hutchison.
I approve.
Susan Graham.
Approve.
Stan Galagaski.
Approve.
Ted Gamboge.
Approved.
Don Michaelman.
Approve.
The motion passes unanimously.
Next item on the agenda is CSP 22-003: Consideration of a Comprehensive Sign Plan for Seventh Day Advents Church and School for a New Digital Monument Sign, 2980 Willow Creek Road. Property owner, Arizona Conference Corporation Seventh Day Advents. Applicant is A&amp;B Sign Company, APN of 106-21-237A. George?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is similar circumstance, only this location does not already have an existing comprehensive sign plan. So this is a request for a new plan. This request is for a 36-square-foot monument sign, 50% of that being allowed to be a changeable copy sign. The proposal is for a 24-square-foot digital sign with an additional 16 square foot of standard fixed identification signs. So this one adds up to -- and you guys are making me do math in the morning -- 40 square feet instead of 36 square feet. This location is on Willow Creek Road at Nicolet Trail. It's existing church complex. There is a -- multiple buildings. They are attached together, but their uses are separated, so they do qualify as applicable for comprehensive sign plan as they've requested. Again, the location, the zoning is actually a single-family zoning, and churches are permitted in single-family through what's called a conditional use process, which is applicable. In this case, they obtained that. Location of the proposed sign is on Willow Creek Road. This is the intersection, cross streets. Nicolet Trail is here. The location is down here. It is proposed to be visible from both sides, and I'll show you that with the rendering of the sign. Location for the sign is actually off the roadway just a little ways, but it retains its visibility because there's basically nothing in between it and the roadway, and it doesn't have the same elevation issue that the previous one had where the property is above the highway. This is the proposed sign. Again, it has a changeable copy feature on it, the fixed portion of it. I'm sorry, that was the existing. This is the proposed sign. The changeable copy portion of it is here. The fixed portion is here. This is pretty standard. We're seeing this concept with most of the churches in town, so it wouldn't surprise me to see more of these coming before you. The changeable copies, the old-fashioned changeable copies with the letters that blow off in the wind are gone. We have the electronic, often resulting in very strange things being left up on the sign. The electronic version is much easier to maintain. It's easier for the church to change the message, and it can be a rotating change, again with a 30-second delay so that we don't have something that looks like motion. Our sign code says that you cannot have a moving sign, and that includes the appearance of motion and is specific about the appearance. So a scrolling sign has the appearance of motion and is not permitted under our code. We have a couple of grandfather scrolling signs in town, but most of the changeable copy signs comply with the requirements that we're proposing here. Again, staff, from staff perspective, this makes perfect sense. We don't have an issue with it. As for the requirement for square footage, again, it's a slightly oversized sign as opposed to what's allowed outright in the land development code. So with that, staff is in support of approval of this, and we're here to answer questions. And again, we have the applicant here as well.
Thank you, George. Any questions for George? Any question for the applicant? Any comments from the public? Do I hear a motion on this?
Mr. Chairman, Tom Riley. I will move that we propose approval of this to the council for CSP 22-003. Do I need to read the rest of that stuff?
No.
No.
Correction.
No, not number one there.
It's been moved.
It's 003.
Butch Tracy, a second.
Thank you.
We have a motion been seconded. Further discussion? If not, Kaylee?
Butch Tracy.
Approved.
Tom Riley.
Approve.
Tom Hutchison.
I approve.
Susan Graham.
Approve.
Stan Galagaski.
Approve.
Ted Gamboge.
Approved.
Don Michaelman.
Approve.
The motion passes unanimously.
Next item on the agenda is LDC 22-001: Land Development Code Amendment to Section 2.1.4 and Section 5.2 to replace the Airport Noise Overlay District (ANO) with a new Airport Vicinity Overlay District, also be known as AVO, criteria, and create a district boundary. Before we start, George, normally, we allow three minutes for public comment. Now, with the interest in this, we had extended this out to 10 minutes. We have had several parties asked to have longer than 10 minutes. Would this be acceptable to the commission?
Sure.
If I don't hear any --
Are you providing dinner? We will provide you lunch, sir.
So what we will do on this is we'll allow longer than the 10 minutes there. If you think you're going to have or need to have longer than the normal timeframe, please address that to the commission ahead of time, saying, "I'd like to have X number of minutes," so we have a feel for this and we can somewhat move things through on that part, okay? George?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and commissioners. This is the public hearing for the Land Development Code proposed modification. It's an important part of our processes. It's ensconced in the state statutes as well as our local codes that public hearings are necessary for input for you to make decisions on recommendations on the council. Acknowledging that, staff does have a presentation that we'd like to give you to address some things that were brought up either during the last meeting where we did an introduction to this or that have come up as a result of our own internal discussions. So we will move through this as fast as we can so that we can get into the public part of the process and get out of the way and allow the comments that you're here for. We do encourage anyone who has questions about either the content of the document itself or information about particular areas to take a look at the city's website. There is a Boards and Commissions meeting page. There is an agenda packet and agenda information and some additional adjunct information that may be helpful for the public to take a look at before we get through the rest of this One of the things that I think is important is for us to talk about what the overlay district is intended to do, and I have another slide that talks about what it's not intended to do. So I'm going to run through these very fast. It's a very long list. I apologize. One of the things that it does is map out the boundary so that it's very clear what the limits are of the AVO's requirements, and I apologize, I'm going to use AVO just for brevity. It's Airport Vicinity Overlay District. Map boundaries so that we have a clear explanation of what's affected. We have the allowable uses and limitations listed in that document. They're listed in a land use table, very similar to the table we use through the rest of the zoning code. We explain the boundaries, what they are and why they're there. One of the main boundaries is the navigation easement requirement that was put in place way back in 2001 by the city. We use the same boundary for the AVO, so we're not imposing any requirements beyond what are already in place for navigation easements for property. So these are areas that were identified as being impacted by aviation uses, uses associated with our airport, and it's been in place since 2001. We have identified and clearly labeled and shown in mapping, and we'll talk about it as we go through this process, as we show you some additional information, where the impact zones are. Impact zones are safety zones. These are areas where potential aircraft impacts can occur. That can be aircraft crashing. It can be hard landings. It can be emergency situations. We believe this document promotes and helps set in zoning some protections for community health, safety, and welfare. Obviously, we want to prevent uses. The very purpose of zoning is to prevent incompatible uses from being adjacent to each other. That was the very first use of zoning in the country, was to separate uses that were incompatible. We're following that very beginning with this document, we believe. We have grant assurances associated with grants that we've received over the years from the FAA. One of those requirements of adopting the Airport Vicinity Overlay would be to help protect those grant assurances. We don't want development to occur that could impact the grant assurances that we've already given to the FAA. We're also looking at future development of the airport and air carrier services at the airport. Again, the impact zones, the noise zones that we're going to talk about are all part of that consideration of future airport growth and economic operation. It protects the airport. There is a major employment center. With the number of businesses located at the airport or located in the vicinity of the airport that need the use of the airport, it's a significant employment center for the city and an economic driver as a result of that. We also believe that we're pulling in parts of, key parts of, a whole tapestry of plans that have been in place for decades. Since 2001, we've had an airport-specific area plan. We had the airport influence area. In subsequent years, 2009 and then 2015, we've had other plans that represent protections for the airport or promote protections for the airport, and we believe we're doing that with this document. Couple of things that this document doesn't do. It doesn't change the operations of aircraft at the airport nor the flight patterns of aircraft at the airport. That is not on the table for your discussion today based on the zoning aspect of this document. So we're not changing any of the operations of the airport by a zoning. What we're trying to do is to keep incompatible uses, and I have a typo in there, incompatible uses for encroaching near the airport that could impact both the use and the airport. So again, we're looking at compatibility, which is one of the key things that created zoning in the first place, protecting incompatible uses from being in close proximity to each other. We're also looking at dealing with the fact that in some cases, we will create situations where properties that are existing today will become a legal, non-conforming use. What that means is they were permitted at the time they were constructed, but changes to city codes over the years have made them no longer compliant to all of the requirements of the city codes. It's a very common situation. We have it all over the city of Prescott. It most often happens in areas that are zoned industrial but have residential uses that predated that zoning. North part of downtown is an example of that. There's a lot of residential uses that preexisted. The industrial zoning that was placed over them was placed over them to support the railroad, another infrastructure issue similar to our circumstance with the airport. So in protecting the railroad, they created industrial zoning, but the industrial zoning made the residential uses non-conforming. Legal non-conforming uses may remain forever as long as they remain there. If they are destroyed by some form of disaster, they are permitted to be rebuilt. The language we're proposing to include in this is actually the same language that covers the rest of the land development code.
George, would you repeat those two sentences?
I've actually got it up on the screen, but yes, I will. If you have a non-conforming use, a legal non-conforming use in an area, if there is a disaster of some kind, a fire, a flood, a tornado, which we rarely have, but any kind of impact like that, your use can be reconstructed on the property. If you voluntarily remove the use, there is a different process that requires an appeal, and in most cases, the intent of code is to have those legal non-conforming uses eventually live out a formal life and go away. We have circumstances that are significantly different with some of the neighborhoods here, obviously. We're not going to put a gas station in the middle of a subdivision. So there are some different circumstances, and there are processes already in the code that have been in the code since 2001 to address those. So one of the questions that came up last time was about language that we had adopted from another municipality in the proposal, and that language included a 50% trigger mark. If you lost 50% of the value, you had to bring it into conformance. That's not consistent with the rest of city code. It's not consistent with the rest of the land development code. So we've removed that and just replaced it with language that covers all of the rest of the land development code. So this is actually a clip right out of the land development code now.
Just to -- we had several parties who were expressing interest that if something happened to their home, that they are able to rebuild as it was before. They are not going to be halted in that process. That is correct?
That is correct. So if you have a home that becomes legal non-conforming through this process, if this ordinance is adopted eventually, and you have a disaster of some kind in your home, that disaster can be corrected. It can be done through a replacement of the building if there's a fire, for instance. It can be done through repairs, maintenance. Any of those things can be done as long as the use remains, and the use in most cases of what we're talking about is a single-family home. So as long as you maintain the single-family home use, that nonconformance doesn't affect your use of the property. It can continue forever.
I have another announcement. Housekeeping, rather. If you're listening at home, the audio is much better through our city website, the video link there. And if you -- but if you want to comment, you will need to do it via Zoom. Thank you.
Thank you. George? Commissioner Riley?
Tom Riley. George, what about if I wanted to add on to my home in a way, you know, remodel the home, things like that? Am I allowed to do that? Can I add on to it just as I would, as if there was no AVO in place, do remodeling?
You would be subject to the requirements of the AVO for conditions, but the answer would be generally, yes. If there are height limitations within either the zoning district or because of the AVO, you're subject to them. If there are notice requirements through FAA, things like that, you would be subject to them.
And you are now subject to those things.
You are now, correct.
So that's not going to change?
That doesn't change. What this does differently than what we had last time is this is fair and consistent across the entire city and across all of our zoning codes. So this language is the same as everywhere else and for everything else.
Okay. So unless I choose to tear my house down, I can rebuild it? I can put in a new kitchen and on a bathroom?
If you voluntarily -- and I apologize, I did not cut that section and clip it in here. There is a separate section of an appeal for deviation from this. So if you wanted to voluntarily remove your home, you are not subject to -- the language in our code is casualty or act of God. You're not subject to either of those. You're not subject to either of those. Then there is a separate process, an appeal process, that you would go through to obtain permission to rebuild the home at the same site.
But remodeling the home is okay?
Remodeling the home doesn't change the use. The use is a single-family home.
Okay. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
George, this is Sisyn Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
What if they have more property and want to add a guest home on their property?
Again, subject to the general zoning code, which tells you what you can and can't do on single-family property, that's certainly a possibility. Adding a guest quarters to property that is an existing single-family, when guest quarters are considered a legal accessory to it, I believe would meet the requirements here. I'm going to go back one slide just to point out a couple of very quick things for you, and then we're going to move on relatively quickly. We made a couple of minor text changes. We talked about them last time. There was some language in the actual table of land uses where we had an asterisk by something that we decided not to have an asterisk by that was removed. So a couple of very minor things in the table. We substituted the language for non-conforming uses. Again, that's important. We also want to point out that, based on internal discussions and discussions with experts, the noise contours that we're going to show you in subsequent slides are applicable within impact zones one through six. There are some areas within the AVO boundary, again, it's a fairly large boundary, that are outside of impact zones. Within those areas, the noise restrictions would not apply, and that language will be identified clearly in the table of the document. So within an impact zone, one through six, the noise contours that we're going to talk about a little bit later do apply, and the restrictions associated with them would apply. Outside of those impact zones, they would not apply. That was very attention-getting.
George, I think I'd like to ask Matt a question.
Sure.
Does this take the form of ex post facto law?
Speaking to the mic, Tom.
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 Can we start over? Is that better? Does this take the form of ex post facto law where we're punishing somebody for something that was clearly okay before, and now we changed the law and they're being punished? And I think that's unconstitutional.
Please, for yourself.
I'm not overly concerned about an ex post facto law argument because the new law will be prospective in nature, so.
So they're grandfathered in, if you would.
Legally non-conforming. So what, one of the things that zoning typically does is have a forward look. So we don't impose zoning regulations that have a backward impact on most property. So we wouldn't be able to rezone someone's property, for instance, where they have a business now, and tell them they have to close the business and remove the building. I think that's what you were talking about. If they voluntarily remove the building, they may not be able to put it back if the zoning has changed, but that's a future action, not an action caused by this. That's what the purpose of legal non-conforming sections are in every zoning code in the country. All of them have these requirements, and all of them are done to adjust to the fact that ultimately what we want are conformance with the codes, but with a recognition that existing structures and existing uses should have an eligible and lengthy lifespan so that they can remain as long as they need to.
Before we continue, I request that the audience respect every speaker up here. They have a right to express their thoughts, as you have a right to express your thoughts, but please respect them as they make their comments. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Question. You had, in a business situation, we talked about residential, but in a business or any kind of a, any kind of a structure, churches, anything like that that's out there right now, hotels, that kind of thing?
Right.
If I build something, okay, and I have plans to build more, will this prevent me from building more if it's a legal non-conforming use? By way of example, if I build an auditorium, I already have an auditorium there, okay, can I expand on it? Can I add something to it? Can I add a use that's consistent with it? I'm basically talking about some of the churches that are out there right now and the schools.
If the use is existing, modifying the structure or modifying the site is certainly within the allowance of this section of our code. Replacing it with something that's not allowed by the new code, if it's adopted, would not be permitted. So if you have a school, for instance, or a church, for instance, and you're in an area that doesn't allow residential use, and you propose to build a residence on that church site, that would not be allowed. If you wanted to add on to the church building itself, again, subject to all of the other rules that apply to construction, you would be allowed to do that. So you wouldn't be able to add a use that's not allowed by the new code if it's adopted, but you can continue, maintain the use that's there now.
When you say continue and maintain, if I have plans to add to it, like we have a, if I have a situation where even my business or everything, I plan on expanding that particular use, and it's consistent with the use, whether it be classrooms for a school, you know, or a gathering room for the school, those kinds of things, will they be allowed to do that? If they've planned on doing it, but when this gets put in place, will they still be allowed to build out the way they planned to build out?
Presuming that the uses that they're proposing to build out are consistent with what was already there, yes. Again, my example of you have a school or a church, and you want to build a residential use, and residential is not allowed, then the answer would be no, because now you're expanding the non-conformance to something greater than you had to start with. If it's something associated with the school and it's not a prohibited use, yes, you would be able to do it.
So I could add more classrooms?
You could add more classrooms.
Okay. Okay, well, that's good to know. So even if it's covered by the AVO and not allowed for future uses, if I have plans to do that, I can continue to build out the way I planned, as long as the use is consistent?
As long as the use is in conformance with your existing circumstances, and it's not in violation of the AVO. So the conditions are, you can't add residential. You can't add residential to a church property if residential's not allowed by the AVO.
But I continue adding.
It has to be consistent with the allowance of the AVO and whatever plans you may have in here. So part of the problem with your question is, we don't know what people plan. If they submit plans to us and drawings to us, now we know. But if they don't, they could come back later and say, you know, I planned to put a residence here all along. It's not going to happen.
I'm not concerned about that. I'm just concerned about expanding the existing use. I can continue to expand that, and there's no restrictions on me expanding an existing use, even if it's non-conforming?
There are lots of restrictions, but they're all existing zoning restrictions.
Okay, so the AVO will not restrict me?
It won't change that. Again, under this section, this would apply.
Okay. So just so I'm clear, the AVO would not restrict me from expanding an existing use, an existing non-conforming use, that would not be allowed otherwise?
That's correct. Are we good? Shall I proceed?
For now.
I don't see any one of the questions. One of the things that we've gotten a lot of questions about by email, we received a lot of emails, so a lot of the folks here may have submitted emails to us with questions. One of the things that we did was to go back and look at those neighborhoods that are existing non-conforming. I have a quick review of slides. This information is all on the city website, again. If you look for the meeting page for Planning Commission, all of this is in a document on the website. Antelope Hills is a golf course community in very close proximity to the airport. The area is already zoned for single-family homes, which basically makes the entire neighborhood legal non-conforming if this code is passed, because residential use in very close proximity to the airport is deemed incompatible by a number of different studies. So your property would become legal non-conforming. Again, grandfathering is the common term. Planners don't use that. There are connotations to it we just disagree with. Your neighborhood already has requirements for navigation easements, so we would require an navigation easement of you if you need something from the city. If you're required to pull a building permit, for instance, we're going to ask for a navigation easement. That requirement's already in place, so it's not being changed by the AVO. What is being changed by the AVO is something that's discussed in a number of documents, but not formally required, and that is fair notice disclosure that would be included in any type of closing agreements on sale of property or rental agreements that tells people they're in close proximity to the airport. Now, in some of these areas, it's pretty obvious, but in other areas I'm going to talk about, it may not be quite so obvious that you're in close proximity to the airport. Granite Dells Estates neighborhood is relatively further away. Most of that property is single-family zoning, so we expect single-family homes, but there's only a very small piece of three streets that's actually impacted by one of the impact zones, impact zone four touches this neighborhood. Those areas that have their property touched by impact zone four would become legal non-conforming. The remainder of the neighborhood is not affected in any way. The legal non-conforming, again, allows the residential use to continue. It allows the property to be enjoyed for the purpose that it was constructed for. And again, if you need permits from us, or if you need something that requires a city approval, a navigation easement, if we don't have one on file, and a fair notice disclosure would be required. And these are relatively, the fair notice disclosure is a relatively new requirement. It has been a recommendation for, since 2001, with the adoption of the airport-specific area plan. Just to give you an idea of how much of Granite Dells Estates, these are the three streets that are impacted, and you can see that there are relatively few homes that are really going to have any effect whatsoever from this document. Very reassuring to anyone not on that map.
George, if that plot hadn't been built out, would the whole plot be non-conforming? If a piece of it is?
You mean if there were a vacant lot left to be developed?
This was up for grabs. If we wanted to build this, what you're showing.
Okay.
And would part of it be conforming and part of it not be non-conforming? Or would the whole lot be non-conforming?
The way our code is worded, the way this proposal is worded, is consistent with the rest of the city's overlay districts. If the district boundaries touch you, you're subject to the district requirements. In this particular case, because parts of these lots are touched by the overlay district, those parts are subject to, the whole lot is subject to the requirements of that district. So we're not going to say you can't build in your backyard, but you can in your front yard to a property that's bisected by the line. The whole property is subject to that requirement. If this were a blank piece of property, a vacant, large vacant lot, and someone proposed to develop this neighborhood, to do a subdivision plat, we would require they meet the requirements of the AVO, presuming it's approved, by notching out the area that doesn't allow residential uses and setting that aside for something else. So we would have a different layout if this were to come back to us as a blank piece of property, and the houses that you see here would not be within the red area. Something else would be that's compatible with those overflights.
Thank you.
George, can you flesh out this idea of fair disclosure? Tell me a little bit about, I mean, I think that that's wonderful. People who buy out there, they need to be know about during the sales process and not necessarily hand it a navigation easement when they're doing the closing documents, and they're not likely to back out because everything is in place. So the point is, is that when would the fair disclosure notice take place?
I'll let the airport director talk more about that. The fair notice disclosure is something that's common with airports around the country, and she has a lot of information.
Awesome.
So we're creating a packet, so when folks approach the community development department, the packet will actually have a sample fair notice disclosure in it, and it will say to do it at the time that they're going to go ahead and apply for the particular item that they want to get a permit on, in that case. With regard to a rental agreement or something like that, it would indicate that, you know, it would be part of the rental agreement as an attachment.
So that person would have to come to the city specifically asking about this, and not necessarily during any sales process or anything like that, know that they'll be buying a home that has restrictions on it, or?
You want to address that?
Yeah. The requirement is on the property owner of the property. So if you're selling a house or you're renting a house, that's when the navigation easement and the fair notice disclosure happen. So it's on the current owner of the house to have that information. We will widely distribute it and make it easily available on the city website in a form that's been approved by the city, so that someone can simply download it and tailor it to their particular property. But it is the seller or renter of the property, rather than the buyer or rentee of the property. It's on the person who already has control of the property to provide this fair notice disclosure to the person who's trying to buy or rent.
And are there any teeth in it?
We can sue you and we can fine you.
Okay. Thank you. And I noticed one other inconsistency. Kaylee?
Yes.
You don't call out Tom Hutchinson when he doesn't say his name.
Did he not? Bad.
What you calling on me?
I was just focused on how quiet his voice was.
Okay, so a quick conversation about Saddlewood and Westwood. So Saddlewood and Westwood are within a master plan community, and there are some different circumstances that are still being worked out on that, so I don't have any specifics that I want to address there. If, if the circumstances are addressed and it's fully fleshed out, what we're expecting is that if you become a legal non-conforming, you're going to have the same situation that every other legal non-conforming property in the AVO will have, every other legal non-conforming situation in the city of Prescott would have. So again, the same thing we talked about earlier, being able to rebuild in case of disaster, having some limitations on new uses based on the AVO, again, should it be approved. We had a specific request from someone relating to an interest in Trinity School, which is existing out there. They do have a campus master plan that's been presented to us and would be able to continue to build out that master plan. Again, subject to it being appropriate school uses and not trying to put a use that's inconsistent with the AVO limitations on it. So we expect they will finish their campus as planned. Penon Oaks neighborhood is, again, a little further away, although they're closer to the primary runway and the primary overflight area, so it's one we want to talk about a little bit. They're zoned for single-family homes. A small portion of the neighborhood would be affected by implementation of the AVO, and I'll show you that in just a moment with a map. All the same criteria I've already talked about. Fair notice disclosure, navigation easements would be required if you're in an area that's impacted by either one of the safety impact zones or the noise contour zones that are applicable. You become a legal non-conforming, you continue the residential use of the property. uses in the code. This is a boundary for 55 DNL, and we're going to talk about DNL in a couple of slides. What it is, is a noise contour associated with the amount of overflight noise on an average over a 24-hour period over a year. There's a faint line that you can see here. That curve line, curved line, excuse me, is the boundary of a zone, zone six. So the noise contour limitations of, on the residential, the area that's being, would be made legally non-conforming by this code if it's adopted, is contained within this area and within these boundaries. So there are some areas out here that are within a noise contour, but outside of an impact zone, those would not be affected by the limitations of the 55. And that was in our first slide or two.
Tom Riley? George, can you tell me if this was the yellow up on the map, that's the 55 DNL?
That's the 55. There's a little bit of the 60 DNL, and again, we'll look at some additional maps. The airport director's got some more information she's going to show you in a few slides. That's 60 DNL, so it really doesn't get into the neighborhood at the 60 level. It does with the 55 level. And these noise contours are based on a couple of different things. They're also a concern for They're also a concern for safety. There's noise there because planes are flying over, therefore, you do have some risk. The higher the risk, the redder color on here, but there's risk associated with Zones One through Six around the airport. So, that's why that boundary means something.
But how the boundary is set for sound?
The boundary is set for sound...
May or may not affect.
Correct, correct. If you're within one of the impact zones that have been identified as having additional potential hazard, it's not really a direct hazard, but a potential hazard, then the noise contours would help protect you, protect the airport from having additional encroachment. Again, with existing development, we don't want to impose any restrictions on properties that we don't need to, and again, that's why the legal non-conforming section exists in our code. So, those areas that become legal non-conforming retain their use and retain their rights to that use.
George, have a question. This is Susan Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
If you want to remodel and you're required to get a permit, and you have to have an navigation easement analysis done, what is the cost of... ...themselves, and what kind of timeframe for it to get approved?
So, we have standard forms for navigation easements that we use when new subdivisions are created. It's that same standard form. There should be little or no cost to the property owner to do the easement. We haven't landed necessarily on, easements get recorded with the county. We haven't landed exactly on whether we record the easement or the property owner does, but that's something that can be worked out. Recordation of an easement is roughly $30.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
George, I'm just wondering...
Your name, sir?
It's not Tom Riley.
Tom Hutchinson.
I want to buy a house that's in a non-conforming area. Can I get a piece of paper that says, hey, this is a noisy area? Be aware. To what extent does that indemnify the city?
The easement language does provide some indemnity, because we know aircraft are flying over, there can be impacts on the property. So, there's a disclosure part of that that says, I understand that there can be impacts on me. Do you want to get into detail, or is that sufficient detail?
The answer is that indemnifies the city. It's written into the document. Sell a lot.
Yeah, in plain language. We're good? Walden Farms is another area that is nearby, so this is just west of Granite Dells Estates and west of Granite Creek. Walden Farms has a very tiny area of impact. Only two properties are actually impacted by either noise contours or impact zones, and I'll show you that in just a moment. So, again, those two properties would be subject to the legal non-conforming limitations that we've already talked about. Noise contour affects that property and that property and nothing else. So, the remainder of Walden Farms is not impacted in any way by adoption of this requirement. We've talked a little bit about the boundaries, and here's just a picture of it. The existing airport influence area boundary is this. That was created in 2001. We have selected and recommend that the AVO conform to that boundary. So, we are not extending the AVO requirements anywhere beyond their already existing impacted property requirements. This area requires the navigation easement, and I apologize, my voice is going up and down with this microphone. The navigation easement already required for all of the properties with this area. The fair notice disclosure, I believe, is also provided for this area, so the AVO boundary would be that same boundary. I've labeled a couple of locations just so you get an idea of where they are. So, Granite Dells Estates is there, Walden Farms is there, Pinon Oaks is here. This is the area of Saddlewood and Westwood, and then the Antelope Hills area is this one. So, I'm going to turn it over to the airport director for a few more slides? Sorry, yes, sir?
I do have a question. I'm looking for the exact, oh, Tom Riley, sorry. Boy, you don't call it anybody else.
One of the concerns that I have is codifying the, which we'll be talking about, like the Trinity School, different things like that. That's not written in this agreement right now. The way this, the way this AVO is written, it says that they wouldn't be allowed to do that. So, I guess the question is, how are we going to codify some of these things that you're telling us here, get into this document before we move it forward? And I may defer a little bit to the legal department on that. The answer to the question is the non-conforming provisions. So, it does codify existing non-conforming uses. That's specifically called out in this document that points back to the non-conformance that covers all of the zoning code. So, if you have an existing use, you can continue it under those criteria. It's intended to prevent new uses. So, we know we have adverse impacts from having a school built at the end of the runway because it's unsafe and planes could crash into it. Our convention is, we don't want new schools at the end of runways. So, the code would prevent future actions, future development, to create a situation that's incompatible with the already existing conditions. If it's something that's already existing, covered by the non-conforming section. Could that answer your question, too? Sort of. And I would just add that, you know, the extent that this is an overlay district, it's tantamount to rezoning. And zoning is a legislative function, and what you want in your zoning code is laws of general applicability, and you don't want to get super specific necessarily to individual projects. I don't know if that answers the question.
I understand that you don't want to call out the one particular project.
Tom Riley. I don't want to call out the one specific project, I understand that. But I guess it's, I'm just going to have to be, rely on the existing code to say that, in fact, things that are planned, even though they're not constructed, if they are planned to be done, done that way, that they're allowed to continue on with their plans even though they're not constructed. You were talking about adding additional structures to an existing non-conforming use if this code gets about it. The answer is yes to that.
What about...
I don't want to discourage any questions, but one thing to consider is you're going to get a lot of information from the public and the public hearing. We're going to be available to answer questions after that, whether it's today or a future meeting. So, if, if we haven't completely answered the question, if you can narrow the question down to make sure we cover exactly what you want, we will answer the question. So, I don't want to, I don't want to pass over you, as we say.
I don't feel passed over.
I'm going to let the airport director, for a few slides here, and then I'll be back and we'll get into public viewing.
Hello, everyone. I'm Robyn Spot, I'm the airport director, again, the airport director here since 2018 January, and a lot's happened at the airport, and I really appreciate the opportunity to present. There's only three slides here because we've spent a lot of time in foundation on what's in front of us, and what's really important is, a lot of folks here, and frankly, in the other room and across the city, would like to have their voices heard, and I think that's the most important. So, we do encourage, aside from these three slides, if you have additional questions, please do go back and look at some of the previous presentations where we did go into more depth on these items. So, up here you have the existing airport impact zones. These were created back in 2009 under the Airport Land Use Plan, which was Appendix Three of the Airport Master Plan. Airport impact zones are created based on safety and impact data. Originally, they were created based on the data that was provided by the MTSB, which is the National Transportation Safety Board, and they're adopted as a standard to limit damages caused by an aviation accident, to protect airport viability and to limit noise and overflight impact on residential and sensitive areas. I'd like to point out the fact that the original impact zones were drawn by a consultant. This particular zone right here, Zone Two, was discrepant on some diagrams. It was correct in the table. We have corrected it, and we have notified the landowners. It should have been a little bit longer. So, this is the properly depicted impact zones, but they are very important to protect the future in the airport. Different risk levels were discussed in previous presentations. People can refer back to those. As you go out, the risk level does increase, and this is area up here is referred to as Zone Six. This is Zone Four. This is Zone Two. This is Zone One. And this we refer to as the skirt, and that is basically Zone Three. Also, noise contours have been overlaid in conjunction with the airport impact zones. A noise exposure map or a contour is a graphical representation of average noise exposure levels associated with aircraft operations. Some folks don't understand, for example, why it doesn't extend like over here or over here, because they may have a single event, noise event, that actually happens over their house, and they think it's really loud. It's because this is an average over time, and this is sort of a daily dose, if you will, that's averages. It's using the FAA methodology. You can see up here that there's different levels. This is, these are levels of 75, 70, 65, 60, and 55. So, this is the outer edge of the 55 DNL. DNL stands for day and night average sound level, and that is the approved FAA methodology. The FAA has determined that the 65 DNL contour is considered a threshold of significance, below which they do not recommend residential, above which residential has been approved around some airports around the nation. There are also many places around the nation where they've adopted more stringent levels for protection. It's important to point out, this boundary represents our current levels. Our current levels of noise projection or impact, I should say, is based on the 2021 data that was collected, a lot of noise tracking information we've received from the FAA on actual flight tracks around the airport. In 2021, we had 311,000 total operations at our airport. What a lot of folks don't know is that for 10 out of the last 30 years, we actually exceeded that level. We ranged between 320,000 and went to a high of 353,000 operations back in 1997. So, the value of the 55 DNL noise contour is it does allow for the predictable expansion of what will be the 60 contour into the 55 area, which was discussed in previous meetings. We are employing a layered approach, which preserves most current land uses for open parcels. You can see this layered approach shows, and you can kind of see the impact zones here, and there are a few areas where the 55 DNL will not apply to any sort of change because it's outside the impact zone. So, you can see the impact zones here. Here's where the contour peaks out. And again, as you go around here, you can see this is another end of the impact zone. This is a place that we don't have any land use changes, and then you can see the rest of it around the top. In the FAA Order 1015.1F, it does state that local land jurisdictions may have noise and land use compatibility standards that differ from the FAA's land use compatibility guidelines with respect to 65 DNL to be. It's important to note that in some of these areas out here, which is Zone Six, there is still a safety concern. While it's considered relatively low risk, 28% to 30% of accidents do occur in these outer areas of Zone Six. What we've done is, by overlaying the noise contours, what we're really doing is, while there's relatively lower risk in some of the zones, the noise contours provide a secondary measure of relative risk as those contours were generated from actual FAA flight tracks. So, what we're seeing here is the noise contours do show noise, but they also show aircraft flight and overflight in terms of the concentration of those areas being higher where the noise contours are higher as well. So, this is a, an overlay, just so folks know, it is complicated when you're in the areas around an airport. There are many protected areas around the airport. That includes the airport impact zones, which are for safety. Again, those show up here in the blue and here. There are noise contours, which you can see, these sort of footprints, these are referred to as noise exposure maps. There's something referred to as the airline one-engine departure splay or path. This is actually required by the FAA of the airlines. They must have a defined path that they can leave the airport. This is the area over here. There are actually multiple splays on record at multiple institutions, including United and SkyWest Airlines Provider Aero Data and others, and SkyWest. So, these are displayed. This comprises all the splays that are currently registered with the airport. There's also a splay that goes off of this end. This is the location of the Drake VOR, which is a very high frequency unidirectional range indication station where pilots would go if they have a problem live boarding or carrier aircraft, to work out the issue and then come back around and land safely. There's also an FAA basic evaluation of airspace obstructions. Some people refer to it as the 7460 process or the Part 77 process. That process does not presume that aircraft are in trouble. These other areas up here presume that there may be a problem with an aircraft, and so therefore, you do have to have additional layers of protection. This one presumes that it's just normal operations of aircraft, both as instrument and visual conditions. There are also easements and disclosures. That includes the airport influence area, which is shown right here, which already exists, the public airport disclosure map recorded by the state of Arizona. And then the last thing that we're discussing is the fair notice disclosure. When we have projects come through, we also have other impacts or considerations to be taken account, smoke, lights, solar glare, drones, wildlife attraction, tractants, and of course, the development agreements that are in the areas around the airport are also important in our decision-making processes. So, again, that's a very, very short snapshot of the aviation airport-related items, and if you have questions later on, that'd be great, and I look forward to hearing from
Michael, do you have any questions for staff? Before we go on to public comments?
Yes. Tom Riley. Why the 55 DNL?
So, the 55 DNL, or day-night average sound level, is one of the measures that is measured in some of the locations around the country. It is, according to the Congressional Research Service, a recent FAA survey of approximately 10,000 people living near 20 representative airports showed that aircraft noise becomes a significant annoyance at levels as low as 50 dB and as well as 55 dB DNL. This suggests that the established DNL 65 threshold or significance that has been used since 1978 is not so, I'm sorry, since 1978, is not effective for identifying significant noise problems. It may no longer be adequate, an adequate guide for federal policymakers. So, what's happening right now across the country and actually regulatorily is, I'm looking back at some of this research, and the original threshold of significance of the 65 DNL appears to be inadequate for determining annoyance levels. So, as policymakers look at that, and as we look at what we should protect, the 55 DNL gives us a buffer. So, as the airport expands, naturally, the 60, which was called out in the Airport Specific Area Plan, and the 50 that was called in the land use plan is the, is the buffer that we wanted to establish in 2009 and 2011, those would be protected and reflected in this plan. So, basically, the 55 was effective back in 2009 as the, the area for protection of the airport, using that compromise.
Is the purpose of setting these sound barriers, sound boundaries, so that people don't have to listen to planes?
I think noise and overflight are concerns for folks. The real problem here is that there are two ways that airports can, if you will, be challenged by a community. One is obviously if there's a safety hazard, and that's clearly covered by the impact zones. But the second is that noise and overflight can, in essence, so annoy individuals that they move to action against the future development of the airport. What we did here, though, is we took the best of both. We coupled them together, and we said that we're not only looking at the impact zones as a measure of protection, but a second layer or a secondary item that informs us are the noise contours, because those noise contours are based on overflight, and that overflight is also represented in those noise contours.
Okay, so, if the, if we were to keep the 65 and not go to the 55, the navigation easements that people are required to sign basically indemnify the city from any adverse action that they might be able to take? So, that legal protection is in place, is it not?
The legal protection is in place for the city, but pragmatically speaking, with those individuals have signed their rights away from being able to sue, and they are opposed to the level of overflight that they discover is untenable for the quality of life that they expect to have in the residence they purchased. The only action or act that they have left is to basically oppose any future development of the airport. It has to be taken into account that if you look at, for example, Santa Monica Airport, which is in its last phases of existence in California as an airport, it wasn't safety that was the biggest issue, it was noise and, and overflight, and that was, that was protected the little... and, and overflight. And that was, that was protected the level of sixty-five and that was not adequate. What the studies have shown of those ten thousand homes is individuals who would be allowed to live, for example, within the sixty-five D N L would be more than seventy percent, on average, seventy percent highly annoyed. In the area of the sixty D N L contour, fifty percent of those people will be highly annoyed. Even using the fifty-five D N L contour as a measure of annoyance, thirty-three percent of folks in that area will be highly annoyed. When the original sixty-five D N L contour was adopted using the Schultz curve back in nineteen seventy-eight, it was presumed that only twelve percent or less of the people in the sixty-five D N L would be highly annoyed. It appears those studies have somehow were mistaken or they're revolved.
So what we're trying to do here is protect people from being annoyed?
It isn't just it is actually, it's a good question. It is, that's why it's a layered approach. And I think, you know, I appreciate your position because a lot of folks say, are we doing something just because of noise? And the answer is no. What are we, what we are doing here is we're looking at a combination of safety and a layered approach. And the layered approach looks at the fact that contours are actually created using actual radar tracking data. And those contours and that data represent where more overflights are in some areas. That does reflect a level of reflective risk or increased risk associated with overflight in those areas. So it is not just noise, it's overflight and it's the possibility of risk.
I don't have any problem with safety. We'll move on.
Oh, no, they're really good questions.
You better start with telling your name.
Robin, could we come through fifty-five D N L as a national code change?
I think it is highly likely that FAA will be moving to make policy changes in the future. Where the line will end is still in question. What you will likely hear, again, according to this congressional record and other things that are happening right now, is it'll probably be a variety of measures and metrics that will be used to most appropriately protect airports from infringement that could jeopardize its future development. So I do believe sixty is a possibility. I do believe the change in the methodology, or again, a layered approach that looks not only at things like safety and impact zones, noise and other single event noise level measurements that really mean that a person's true perception of noise will be taken into account. It is definitely a variety. Does that answer your question?
Kind of.
There are many, many communities that have adopted contours and protections beyond the
Tom Riley. I have heard, you have spoken the last time we got together, and I think one of them was the joint meeting as well, about two other issues with regards to adopting the A V O. One of them was that it might put FAA grants at risk. Has the FAA weighed in on that and told you that?
The FAA, I can tell you right now that the FAA requires that you sign grant assurances and grant assurances number twenty and twenty-one, signed by the mayor most recently about two weeks ago, do indicate that we not only have to maintain compatible land use to the extent reasonable to continue the normal operations now and into the future. I am concerned that our future projects and developments could be jeopardized by the very encroachment that could happen if not properly controlled. The FAA has choices. It looks at communities readiness and willingness to defend the resource. It doesn't operate in the, in the realm of penalties so much as incentives. And the incentives are, if you maintain compatible land use such that you don't have opposition for the natural future development of the airport, that you will be rewarded. There are probably ten or twenty airports in line for every dollar that we're asking for in the future for the development of this airport and to bring better air service and to bring the vision of the only commercial service airport to, to, to our, to our proposed plans. But we can't do that without the support of the FAA. And because those funds are discretionary, they're not guaranteed, you have to earn them by making sure that you maintain your grant assurance compliance. So it is not a given that we will get those funds. And after some of the experts will be speaking today and to say the reasons why we can do the absolute minimum, minimum, they will not be here to be able to advocate for the future funding of this airport, the hundred million dollars roughly in the next six years that we will need to extend the runway and to be able to provide improved air service and frankly, be able to separate from some of the traffic from these sensitive uses underneath. So the FAA will not tell you outright that you're doing something wrong. You just will not receive the funding for the things you need to do.
And these are things that you suspect will be, will be coming down based on your experience.
I'm absolutely confident that this A V O is integral to the future development of the airport and the maintenance, in the vision that we have all established as a community.
Okay, thank you for that.
Any other questions?
I've got one, Stan Galagaski. So you said, how many, Dr. Savota, so the, how many grants have we had in recent years? You listed twenty and twenty-one. Are there nineteen grants that total that we've received? Or those just kind of go explain that? I know we've received a large portion of grants for our airport, for our terminal. And also go into what grants have we been awarded, but we haven't acted on them?
Currently, well, since I arrived in twenty eighteen, we received or grants or grant commitments of more than fifty million dollars. That is more than the combined history, even adjusted for, you know, inflation of the entire history of the airport. That's what we received in the last four years.
In four years?
Four years. And we're looking forward to somewhere between eighty and a hundred million in grants that we will need for the future development of this airport. The FAA generally and most grants will pay ninety-five percent of the grants and those will be matched two and a half percent by the state. There are some state grants that are ninety-ten, but for the most precious city share is about two and a half percent. And those grant assurances do have an obligation that are associated with those grants of twenty years of the life of the object that's purchased. So we have an obligation to maintain those grants for the next twenty years. We also did share our plan with the FAA for this A V O and they were very impressed. And that's what you need in order to get that level of support. To clarify, we are only entitled to one million dollars a year in our entitlements. The rest of it is referred to as discretionary, which means it is discretionary on behalf of the FAA, whether or not this community deserves it and whether or not we properly protected this asset.
But in our, in the grants that we've already been awarded, have, have we already, is there anything in those assurances that goes into what this, that we have to do this overlay, that we have to do a new ordinance? Or is this something that we're doing in anticipation for potential new grants?
We're doing it because it is something that I believe and that the city and the leadership in the strategic plan in January, when they establish the vision, is appropriate to do to maintain and meet our grant insurance requirements.
Thank you.
Okay. Other questions? Anything else from staff? Jordan, before we go to the public?
Yes, sir, just a reminder that we do have some folks in the offsite room, a hundred and twenty of them. We do want to make sure that we remember to look for them when we get to the public comment process of the day plan. I have a fair say as well. We have Henry Witt, who's a community planner and is the voice behind the curtain, who will help maintain any comments or questions through the Zoom meeting that we're holding at the same time. That Zoom meeting link may be part of what we use to get those comments.
Do you have somebody over there in the training room that will guide it? People there too?
So now with that, I'm just going to point out that what Robin and I are here for questions that you may have after or during the public comment. Our intention is to sit back and allow the public comment. So we're here to
Now normally, we take a break when we have a long session like this around ten thirty. Now, if there's I don't want to start a public comment and then break into comment. So why don't we go ahead and take the ten-minute break now and we'll read we, we'll get back, we'll get back at ten thirty. Okay?
The gavel has been, if everybody could take their seats. This is Tom Riley talking again.
George, remember to unmute the computer.
Tom who? I was trying to assist the chairman because the vice chair didn't.
We're going to resume the meeting now. We're going to open up a public comment. And before we do, remember to state your name and address when you come up to speak. If you want to speak, you need to fill out one of the cards and give it to Kaylee and she will be calling it out based upon the order they came in. We are going to start with the room here first. Then we'll be going to the training room and then we'll be going to Zoom. Now, there's a good potentiality. We're not going to be able to have everybody speak before the meeting ends around noon on that. And if that's true, we'll continue on for the next meeting there. So there will be an opportunity to speak, whether it's this time or the next meeting on this. Also ask that if someone has already spoken and stated what you want to state, restating that doesn't necessarily enhance the position on that. So we receive the information, we're going to process the information, but it doesn't have to be repeated and repeated and repeated on that part. And that could be, you know, just to let you know in there. When you come up, if you're going to be longer than ten minutes on that, if you could let us know the approximate timeframe you think you'll be, would appreciate it there. We want to give a chance to all people to speak who want to speak on that. So Kaylee, you want to call the first one?
Yes, I will. I believe we'll go with, so we have three groups speaking today representing different entities. So if we may have the representative for Chamberlain Development come up to speak right now?
Good morning. Can you hear me? Good morning, members of the commission. My name is Mark Guerra. I am general counsel for Chamberlain Development LLC. This is a very large property owner within the Deepwell Ranch community. And Chamberlain will be most decidedly impacted by the adoption of this proposed aviation vicinity, airport vicinity overlay, A V O. I'll be just a moment. The the representation that was made to you in the city, by the city earlier today, was that the city was working with Deepwell Ranch to determine the effects of the A V O on Deepwell Ranch. That absolutely is not the case. In fact, I was informed by the city as of last night that Deepwell Ranch would not be excluded from this A V O. And bear in mind that Deepwell Ranch is already subject to a binding development agreement that already has zoning in place. This, this commission has only heard one side of the story, the city side. It has not been subject to any critical review or analysis. And we are here now to provide that to this commission. I want to take this opportunity to present to this panel Barbara Lickman, Ph.D. Dr. Lickman has a doctorate in urban and regional planning and has a legal practice specializing in land use specific to airports. She's coming to us a very long way from Newport Beach, California. She has the background, training and experience specific to the issues presented by this A V O. She is undoubtedly the most qualified person in this room to address the issues posed by this A V O. I now want to turn this discussion to Dr. Lickman.
Well, good morning. I think it's still morning and it's a pleasure to be here to be able to discuss this.
We need to get the mic close.
Please keep the mic by you. Sorry. It floats in the face, you know? I'm going to, my, my presentation is going to
I need name and address.
Barbara Lichman.
And address.
Eighteen four hundred Von Carmen, the city of Irvine, California. That's my office address.
Thank you.
And please forget the doctor business, okay? My presentation this morning is going to be in two parts essentially. First, I'm going to talk about the blanket hegemony of the FAA to make the kind of decisions that the city is now being confronted with. And the second is going to be about development agreements and how they fit into this to this mechanism that has been developed of existing use versus non-existing use. Because I think it's very important to understand the role that development agreements play in development. But first, if I may, your, I beg your indulgence because it's important that you understand the federal regulations and laws on this. The federal government has exclusive jurisdiction over the airspace of the United States.
Ma'am, people having trouble hearing, you need to really speak into the microphone, sorry.
I think it needs to come down. Is that better?
There.
Okay.
You can bend it down.
The federal government has exclusive jurisdiction over the airspace of the United States. That's the Congress hath spoken, forty-nine U.S.C. four oh one oh three. That includes the regulation of noise. It is the federal government that regulates noise and determines what is and what is not an adverse impact of noise. And that is said in section four four seven one five. And it says, "To relieve and protect the public health and welfare from aircraft noise and sonic boom, the administrator of the Federal Aviation Administration, as he deems necessary, shall prescribe standards to measure aircraft noise and sonic boom and regulations to control and abate aircraft noise." Now, that's the level of noise that the FAA, that the federal government deems important. What is it? The sixty-five D N L. That has been in place since nineteen ninety-four and has never changed. And you may see it in FAA order fifty-one ninety point six B, section thirteen point nine. Never changed, sixty-five. We are now talking about a fifty-five. So take that for what you will. The airport justifies its reach to the fifty-five D N L through something called the National Curve, which is some research that the FAA has currently embarked in using interviews of noise-impacted citizens to discover what annoys them and what doesn't annoy them. Excellent question. Some people get annoyed with one overflight, some people, it takes an entire airport. In any event, that is disregarded by the FAA. The FAA says, and I quote, the city, I'm sorry, says, "It is simply unless and until," this is what the FAA says, "unless and until any changes become effective." That is, if the National Curve displaces the old noise calculation Schultz curve. "All existing FAA orders, regulations and policies, including the Schultz curve, which is the original determinant of what constitutes an airport noise impact, remain in effect." That is in a twenty twenty-one federal register notice. So right now, there is no fifty-five. And the feds have taken complete preemptive authority over what constitutes a significant impact. So right now, there is no justification for imposing a fifty-five C N E L noise contour. Now, I understand that there is some desire to protect the future of the airport. I understand that. But that is a dream. We don't know that'll happen. What we know is that we have federal preemption now that dictates sixty-five D N L as the level of significance. This plan, as proposed, would be in direct violation of that law. And federal preemption is a critical issue. Especially when it comes to grant assurances. Because no matter what else they require, and I know exactly what's in them, they also require complete obedience to the federal preemptive authority. You go outside that, they don't like it. So, especially if there's more money being asked for homeowners in order to compensate them for the impacts of that. Also, I wish to comment on the O E I. Also, I wish to comment on the OEI discussion, the one engine in operative that, that the airport manager is justifiably concerned about. But I would point out that the OEI procedures are airline and aircraft-specific. They are not done in a general FAA regulation because it is the capacities of each aircraft that determines where it can turn around on one engine. So the FAA does not take much of a part in the determination of OEI for, for good reason. And the last part here is, unless you have questions, which I would be happy to answer, there seems to be a fundamental misunderstanding or lack of understanding of what a development agreement does and what rights it gives. When you have a development agreement, as the Chamberlain Development Group does, you are vested right, unless you have violated any term of that agreement, and it has not. Therefore, we have a right to build. The fact that you've put a 55 counter to federal instruction is what's interfering with that. But that is not good for many reasons, not just for Chamberlain, but it would deprive this community of massive amounts of housing, a church, other benefits on the possible, on the speculation that there might be more aircraft at this airport. Hopefully there will eventually, but we don't know when. We do know that there are people who need to live in that housing. So I would say that we have an obligation, post facto, there was a question, a good one. Yes, it is a post facto application of the law to change the law on pending development. There are numerous cases out there that say that very thing. So you must have been reading, but we appreciate the question. Do we have any other questions?
I have a few questions.
Certainly.
What was your name again?
Barbara Lichman.
Barbara, thank you. Barbara, you talked about sound. Do you have, and you talked a little bit about OEI. This AVO is a combination of, of a lot of impact zones. So what's your, what's your position on the impact zones?
Well, that's a different calculation with respect, she used NT, the manager used NTSB data. So to the extent that it shows some accidents, we don't know how many, because I haven't seen any of the reports on this, any of the written data on noise or accidents, which I think would be very appropriate for the community and the public to see. They're not in the agenda packets. If that is what, is where the aircraft accidents take place, then those impact zones are drawn in those locations. But that does not mean a 55 DNL sound corridor, noise, noise contour. No.
Now, you, you heard discussion earlier about Santa Monica Airport. Is there, from your background and experience, do you see 65 presenting a problem at other airports?
No. The real reason that Santa Monica was closed is because there is a cliff at the end of the runway. They could not put in any kind of mitigation in the case of an overrun, of which they had a numerous, they had numerous overruns over the years and they were scared. The people were scared. Yeah, the people around there didn't make noise about the noise, but the big deal for the FAA also was the city of Santa Monica hadn't taken any money in 20 years. So their obligations were over. That's not true here. But anyway, it was the cliff.
What about John Wayne Airport?
What about it? I live two miles from the end of the runway. What would you like to know?
And how many DNL do you get there?
At my house, I believe they said it's 60.
60.
Yes. It could be, I mean, who knows? But yes, they're very good about it. We have sound monitors all along the bay to measure the noise.
And are there flight restrictions at John Wayne because of the sound?
Curfew.
Curfew.
Please remember, that was put in place in 1986, before the Airport Noise and Capacity Act of 1990, which prohibits all local entities from imposing a curfew.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you ma'am.
Thank you.
I'm going to state this one more time. Whether you agree or disagree, this is not a way to express that within the meeting here. We want to have a meeting that people can express their thoughts and present their thoughts without being disrupted on that. Am I clear? Thank you. Kaylee?
Okay. Next, I will call up the representation for Ron James.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Rob Petrich. My address is 125 North Granite Street, Prescott, Arizona. I've been a resident of Prescott for almost 50 years. Proud of this community, like the airport. Very much concerned, however, what I see going on. And what I see is an application by the city of Prescott to impose a zoning change on 2,500 people plus the Depot Ranch and other property owners that do not currently have those restrictions. So here you are as the Planning and Zoning Commission of the city of Prescott. My first note is to say, and remind the public, the Planning and Zoning Commission's not the culprit here. You are simply a fact-finding body. That's why you're having a public hearing to get as much public comment as you can. I applaud the chairman's comments that you will continue this and make sure everybody gets a chance to speak because we're talking about damage to private property. Everybody should have a chance to speak. So please remember that the minimum is one public meeting. You can have as many as you want. So I appreciate the fact that you're willing to do that. What we just heard from an FAA expert is that federal law preempts the area of noise control around airports. Preempt means the city, the state, the county are precluded from attempting to do what this application is trying to do. There's no jurisdiction before this body to even consider this. It's a violation of federal law. I took the time to look at the packet of information that you have as commission members that was provided by the city and I'm struck by the omission of documents. But I frankly can't say I'm surprised because the applicant is the city and the city prepares a packet that you received. So what you received is just what the city wants you to have. I didn't see anything in there that alerts you to these kinds of problems. There's no mention that the federal government preempts noise control at airports. There's no mention of the development agreement that the city of Prescott has entered into with Deepwell Ranch. The history is, the city came to Ron James and Depot Ranch and said, "Please, we would like to annex your property into the city of Prescott. It's very important to the city that we have your property as in the settlements and not in the county." And Deepwell Ranch agreed on the condition that there be a development agreement that would be the rules of the game. How can this property be used? And specifically, Depot Ranch is comprised of 18,000 acres. The development agreement is only for 1,800 acres, 10% of the ranch. All the rest is open space, which the city very much liked. So we've got 10% of the ranch for possible development. It was approved by the council in 2017 after two years of public hearings, public meetings, meeting with staff. Compare that to the fast track the city has put this thing on. City liked to get this done in six weeks. So if city wants something, they get it done in six weeks. Depot Ranch took two years. Something's wrong with that picture when the city controls the process. We were notified of a major error by the city. James Depot Ranch and Chamberlain Construction were invited to a meeting hosted by the city in the basement conference room, I think you had your executive session. And we didn't know the subject, but we came because we were invited. And when we arrived, we were told that the city had made a major, major, major mistake in the mapping of the runways at the airport. And now the city wanted to acquire additional land from James Depot Ranch and Mr. Chamberlain to extend the runway protection zones. My reaction to that meeting was, well, this is great. This is the city at least being transparent and advising us of a problem. It was a blow because this property was scheduled for development. But the discussion was, all right, if the city actually needs it, go get it appraised. Find out how much it's, it's going to cost you to buy it and we'll cooperate with you in that regard. So a month or two goes by, we don't hear a thing from the city. And instead, we find out, not from the city, but from the Prescott Courier, that the city has instead embarked on an AVO, a noise contours, instead of working with us in good faith. Felt a little bit like Pearl Harbor to me. We continue to have those discussions with the city. Are you going to get the properties appraised with the development rights in place? And the answer was, yes, but not in all cases. the city starts realizing that this is a zoning change. That's why it's before you. It's a zoning change. The zoning change, the city would like to pose on Depot Ranch and 2,500 private property owners. I want to talk a little bit about the process that has been used. I don't know if you've seen the notice that was mailed to the 2,500 property owners, oh, property owners, but here it is. Does this look like fair notice to your citizens? I think not. If you read it, you won't understand it. It was mailed on August 12th, received by most people on August 15th. And the public was directed, if you want to make written comment, you must do so by noon on August 17th. So you received it on August 15th sometime during the day and you've got until noon on August 17th to file anything you wanted to file. Of course, that's about a day and a half for people to try and figure out what this means. Not fair notice, not the kind of treatment you would expect from your own city to your fellow residents. The development agreement clearly states that the owners have the right to undertake and complete the development and use of the property in accordance with the zoning adopted. It states that is the contractually vested right. It says the city will not initiate any changes or modifications or change of zone. But here we are, city is initiating a change of zone. We also have a statute in Arizona that says, once you have a development agreement, the city cannot change the development agreement except upon the consent of the owner. If you go back to the notice, Arizona statute requires 15 days advanced notice if you're going to do a notice by mail. It's mailed August 12th. This meeting is August 25th. That is not 15 days advanced notice, that's 13 days advanced notice. So this meeting you're having today does not even qualify as a public hearing under the statute. But we're here, we appreciate you taking our comment. I think you need all the information you can get. But you've got a defective notice, this is not a public hearing. So even if everybody has a chance to speak today, you're going to have to have another public hearing. So where does that leave us procedurally? It leaves us, number one, federal government has preempted noise regulation at airports. City of Prescott has no business trying to interfere with that. Number two, the development agreement clearly states you will not change zoning. When I say you, I don't mean the commission, I mean the city. I appreciate that you're just a fact-finder, that you did not initiate this change.
That was 10 minutes.
I forgot to state, Mr. Chairman, that I'm one of the people I think you extended additional time to.
If you need more, just let us know roughly how, ma'am.
Well, I didn't practice in front of the bathroom here and time it, so. So I don't really know, but I'll try and make it short.
That may be too much information.
So here we have a situation where Ron James, the James family, from the beginning, in 2015, agreed to be incorporated into the city, agreed to have a development agreement so that everybody would know the rules of the game and has cooperated with the city since then. And now, surprise, surprise, the city wants to renig on its contractual duties. Is that the way we treat people who contract with the city of Prescott? I'd like to point out that this is not about airport protection. That term has been thrown out, it's a red area. If you ask everybody in this room, do you support airport protection? Everybody say yes, of course. Do you support protection of the public schools? Yes, of course. So what is this about? It was very revealing that this is about money, about the ability of the city to hopefully get more grant money in the future by creating all this open space around the airport. And how do you do that? You do that by taking private property without compensation. I looked in your packet, did not say a word about how the city's going to pay for this. It did not say, even if they were going to pay for taking of the private property. There's no mention about compensation or where the money's coming from. So how much is it going to cost the city of Prescott to buy all this land from James Depot Ranch, from Mr. Chamberlain, from 2,500 property owners for their limitation of private property rights? We don't know. That has to be appraised. That's what the city should be doing. And if you want it, pay for it. If you can't afford it, then suddenly you'll find that your, your needs are no longer needs, they're just wants. Just like everybody does at their home budget. You might like to do a lot of things, but if you can't afford it, it's no longer needed to want. So the city's not going to get realistic until they get all these properties appraised. But we don't even know if they're doing that. I've tried to keep my comments really confined to the process. The other side of this is the substance. How will this affect the property owners? And I'll stop there because I know there are other people for James Depot Ranch that will speak as to how this affects the property owners. Do we have any questions, Mr. Chairman?
I have a question. Recently, you said this is a- Recently, you said this is about the money. But do you have any question about the science of the impact zones?
Yes. They cover 25% of the available land in the City of Prescott. Everything that I see on the city maps that they would like to have controlled by the AVO is a huge area. 25% of the land in Prescott. That's overreaching.
And are you suggesting if it was something less, it would still be safe?
It's not about safety. That's a red herring. The reason you know it's not about safety, there's not one shred of documents from the FAA that says this is a safety issue. And in fact, there have been uses applied for buildings and roads by Chamberlain Construction. Those submittals have been made to the FAA, and they've all come back approved. No air hazard. So show me something from FAA that says, you are required, City of Prescott, to create this AVO. There is nothing. In that 55 DNL, it gets you so many areas that are totally unnecessary. That's why you have 2,500 private property owners who are affected. You don't need it.
Is it your conclusion that without the AVO, the FAA would continue to fund the airport?
Yes, and they have. You've heard today, their current grant applications. You've gotten a lot of money in the past. I give credit to the airport director for getting money. You're not going to have trouble getting money. As you heard, FAA makes that determination based on reasonableness. What's reasonable here? We do not have an airport in the middle of nowhere. If you wanted to do everything the airport director wants, you need to go someplace in the middle of nowhere. And you need to have 1,000 acres and do it your way. But you're trying to impose on private property owners things that you would expect if you owned 1,000 acres. But you don't want to pay those private property owners for what you're taking. And when you say you're a nonconforming use, all those 2,500 property owners are having a devaluation of value.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I do.
Sir?
Yep, I do.
Stan?
Stan Galagowski. Mr. Petrich, in your, what you presented here, you mentioned the 2,500 homes that would be in jeopardy, that possibly could, that the city might be liable for, correct?
Correct.
Is it not true that it could be, I mean, from everything that I understand, could it be potentially the price of the whole project that's in jeopardy instead of the 2,500 homes?
For the 2,500 private owners, you're requiring them to give you an aviation easement. They're not required to do that right now. And that limits their rights. And you've heard, the city wants it for the city's protection, not for the citizen's
Should be concerned about the price of the project, though?
Absolutely. Where's the money going to come from? If you think you're going to get 100 million more from FAA, are you going to spend that much just to buy the property rights that you need to create an airport in the middle of nowhere? So if you want land, you've got to pay for it. Depot Ranch has said to the city, if you need it, get it appraised, we'll sell it to you. But instead, the AVO is being fast-tracked. Looks like that's some means to devalue the property to minimize what the city has to pay. Why so fast?
Mr. Petrich, I have no input that says that we're on some time schedule to do this, and we're going to have another meeting at our next scheduled meeting to discuss this.
It's great to hear. Take as many meetings as you need because you've had a lot of public who have dollars and property values at stake. So I congratulate you for willing to do that. I know you're all volunteers. You probably didn't sign up to handle zoning requests by the city. You signed up to handle zoning requests from citizens. So this is something a little bit different.
It's a little different than the sign proposals we had earlier.
Yes.
But it's about as controversial as the Dunkin' Donuts.
Without coffee.
Well, thank you, members of the commission. Appreciate your time, and we'll attend your next meetings as well.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Kaylee?
Yes, I think we have another speaker for James Deepwell. Is that correct?
Yes, thank you. My name is Stephen Polk. I'm attorney for James Depot Ranch and the James Family Foundation, 125 North Granite Street, Prescott, Arizona. And George, if you would, if you wouldn't mind pulling up, showing the impact zones 1 through 6. Fantastic. Let's start here because I know some of the commissioners had questions about this. And if you can take a look at this map, you can see the impact zones 1 through 6. They're not labeled. The color is off the end of the runways. But you can see zones 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 are the small ones, and the bright blue that occupies the huge, very large area, that's impact zone 6. And so I think the first question from Commissioner Gamboji was, are we concerned about the impact zones? And I will tell you today, right now, under the Depot Ranch master plan, the impact zones are adequately protected. The master plan meets or exceeds FAA requirements for impact zones 1 through 6. And what that means is, impact zone 1, the one closest to the end of the runway, requires open space. Nothing will ever be constructed in impact zone 1. That's already in the master plan. It's already in the development agreement. It's protected. Likewise, in impact zone 2, there's no residential. Impact zone 3, that's limited to more type civic uses. There's protections there. And then residential is allowed in impact zones 4, 5, and 6. And there's been a lot of master planning already that goes into this. But what I can tell you is, we meet or exceed the protections required by the FAA. I think in the presentation, there was a discussion about the 55 DNL, day-night average sound levels, those contours. And the information presented was, no residential will be allowed if it's within the 55 DNL and also within impact zone 6. Well, take a look at the map, commissioners. Impact zone 6 is almost entirely the size of the 55 DNL. There's an incredible amount of overlap. And I've heard a figure that 25% of the entire City of Prescott is the size of this 55 DNL. I haven't been able to verify that, but I've heard it's 25% of the entire City of Prescott. George, if you would, could you pull up in the AVO code, section 10.3.3, the nonconforming Commissioners, there were a lot of questions from you about nonconforming uses. Are you allowed to add on to your existing structure? And it wasn't clear to me that this was communicated, but I'm looking right at section B here. The size of the nonconforming structure shall not be expanded. I'll tell you what that means to me. You can't add on to your existing building. Under no circumstances could you add on to your existing building. That's what that means. The size of the nonconforming structure shall not be expanded. So if it's the intent of the planners to allow that, this needs to be fixed. There needs to be real discussion, and the code needs to say what they're telling you it wants to say. We've also had a discussion about navigation easements. It's true that the city code currently requires an navigation easement within the airport influence area. And the airport influence area, by the way, is larger than even the 55 DNL. But the existing current navigation easement that's required is limited to just a release to the city. I've heard discussion, I've heard presentation today, that the new navigation easement will require even more. There'll be even more of a taking from the city, that it will require indemnification, that the property owner actually guarantees they'll indemnify the city if something bad happens on their property related to an airplane, and the city ultimately has to pay for it. That's what an indemnification means. And if that's true, that is an enormous taking. Remember, this code says that navigation easement has to be provided at no cost to the city. That's a taking of private property rights from each of you without just compensation. And now we're adding a fair notice disclosure that requires each property owner, if you rent out your property, you have to provide a fair notice disclosure. If you sell your property, you have to provide a fair notice disclosure. And by the way, there's criminal penalties in this code if you fail to do so. It's a criminal misdemeanor, according to this code, if you don't provide the fair notice disclosure to your renter. Now, the Fifth Amendment of the United States Constitution says, "No person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law. Nor shall private property be taken for public use without just compensation." The Arizona Constitution likewise prohibits the taking of private property without just compensation. And we have an Arizona law called Arizona Prop 207, now codified in Arizona Revised Statutes 12-1134, that if the existing right to use private property is reduced by any zoning law, and the law reduces the fair market value of the property, the owner is entitled to just compensation. That's what the law says. We've also heard today about the new study on noise and the highly annoyed study. If I had to speculate, I think some folks here today might be highly annoyed. But it's not stopping us from having appropriate public discourse. We're all here going to participate in the public process, and we trust that a just outcome will be reached. And I do want to say that James Depot Ranch and the James Family Foundation is deeply committed to the economic health and vitality of this community. And we recognize the airport is an important part of that. But it's just one part. It's one part of the puzzle. We need to figure it all out together. You're going to hear from other affected property owners today on how this proposed AVO affects plans that have been in the process for years and years and years. I know Commissioner Galagowski here asked about, does this jeopardize the whole vitality of projects? Does it potentially jeopardize the entire project? And folks, the developers can speak more to that, but I've heard there's real risk that this is so damaging to the full development of the community that it'll set projects back by decades at the least, if not forever. And on that topic, let's talk about development agreements. The state legislature has passed a law that says development agreements can only be amended by mutual consent of the parties. And the city, in the James Depot Ranch development agreement, agreed to that very thing. It can only be amended by mutual consent. Now, the Arizona Court of Appeals has explained the reason for the special protection. It's because it takes years and years and significant expenditures of money to install the public infrastructure necessary for these developments. And the city gets to shift the cost of these public infrastructure costs to the developer. In these development agreements, the obligation is put on the property owner to pay for the roads, the water lines, the sewer lines, electrical. The public infrastructure gets shifted to the developer. And so what the Court of Appeals says is that in exchange, the property owner must be protected from, and I quote, "the unpredictable political winds." So commissioners, I hope that's not what we have here today. I hope this is not unpolitical, unpredictable political winds. This needs to be careful planning. We need to have full discourse with all of the affected owners, and we need to be able to reach a solution here that adequately protects and plans for our community's future. Now, in the James Depot Ranch master plan, airport protection was already planned for. It already protects the airport impact zones. The entirety of James Depot Ranch is already granted in navigation easement to the City of Prescott. The master plan already prohibits residential homes in sensitive areas right around the airport. This was already all agreed to in 2017. And the master plan already requires noise insulation and specialized building standards for noise reduction. And this is an accepted FAA technique. And to be clear, this development agreement was signed in 2017. The FAA is aware of the planned developments for James Depot Ranch. And you've heard, the airport director has secured $50 million from the FAA since 2018. They're aware of what the planned development is, and they're granting $50 million already to the airport. So today here, the city is trying to change the rules of the game. The airport vicinity overlay is going to affect the entire city. Careful planning is required to make sure we all understand how this is going to impact the community and to make the best decision for our community. And James Depot Ranch would like to be able to meaningfully participate in this discussion. Thank you, commissioners. I'm open to any questions at this time.
Questions?
One question. Mr. Polk, you mentioned that the fair disclosure notice, that you felt like that, the sense that I got was that you don't like it. And I'm wondering, did I misread you or misunderstand you? And if so, why?
Thank you, Commissioner Riley. I think my first and foremost concern on the fair notice disclosure is that it could affect property values. I think there's a real risk of that. But even bigger than that, I think, is the requirement, we're going to put it on 2,500 homeowners and even more as development occurs out there. And we're going to require, there's a criminal penalty if you forget to do that. Well, how is this going to be communicated? How are homeowners supposed to know that they're required to give to a renter? You're renting out your home. That's an informal transaction. And suddenly, it's a criminal penalty if you forget to give the fair notice disclosure.
Okay, so you're not necessarily opposed to a fair notice disclosure, just how it's going to be applied? I, for one, think it's a good idea to let people know if they don't hear the planes, at least notify them in writing that they're there.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think that's fair. I think a fair notice disclosure with appropriate communications and appropriate incentives to have homeowners provide that. I think there's a way to implement it. I don't think passing a law in a month from now and requiring immediately, it's a criminal penalty if you don't do this, I don't think that's an appropriate way to do it.
Thank you.
Other group have a question?
Yeah, I have a question. Steve, tell me about liability, the city's liability, and their requirement for exercise foreseeability on building, allowing houses to be built in an impact zone. How does that work? Can they delegate this because of this development agreement that now they're, while we told you there might be a crash, but you built the houses anyway because we had the agreement and we're off the hook? I need you to help me with that.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Hutchison. Great question. There's a case in Arizona on this exact issue where the city had zoning in place. A homeowner off the end of the runway built an obstruction there. A plane crashed into it. The homeowner sued the city. And what the court in Arizona said is, there's no liability on the city for that. It was the homeowner who created that obstruction.
Aren't we creating this nuisance by allowing houses to be built in a nonconforming area or an impact zone?
Oh, I'd love to clarify that. There are no houses under current zoning regulations here. There are no areas where we're permitted to construct residential under the Depot Ranch master plan. That would be nonconforming under existing FAA regulations.
At least a couple meetings ago, I deeply recall seeing houses in an impact At least a couple meetings ago, I deeply recall seeing houses in an impact zone. Unless I'm making that up.
It's, if we could flip back to an impact zone slide, I think it'd be informative. So if you look at the two runways on the west side here, the southerly one is, you know, is the main runway, runway 12L. Another one is the crosswind runway. Those two are within Depot Ranch Master Plan. And there's six impact zones, Commissioner. The first impact zone is one. That's absolutely open space, already dedicated, already guaranteed.
Could I beg for a second? George, could you use the mouse to assist Stephen with pointing out 1, 2 through 6?
Okay, go ahead and name which one. This is one.
That's impact zone one. And that's in the master plan. That's dedicated open space. No residential will ever be constructed there. Impact zone two. Likewise, impact zone two, no residential can be constructed there. Impact zone three, where the skirt right there on the sides, the one that Dr. Sabata is circling right now, through careful planning and discussions with the city of Prescott, the council actually specifically requested this for that specific impact zone three for mixed-use residential, commercial. And now that's allowed under FAA current regulations. So that can be combination residential and commercial. And now we can do impact zone four. Impact zone four allows residential, but that's allowed under FAA regulation. Likewise, impact zone five. Impact zone five allows residential. And then impact zone six is the much larger circle of the whole impact zone. Thank you. Impact zone six, naturally, of course, you can construct residential in impact zone six.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have a question, but a comment. Stephen, earlier you talked about the call for careful planning. I've also heard a couple times where we're on some time schedule. And I wanted to reassure you, we're here to listen to not only the suits, but the citizens on this issue. So be assured, we're trying to do careful planning.
I appreciate that and thank you, Commissioner. Thank you for my time.
All right. Thank you, sir. My name is Ron James, 4985 North State Route 89, Prescott, Arizona 86301. In issue of time, I'm just going to read my comments. And I guess, where to start? Well, there's an old saying that says, "The devil is in the details." This is surely true of this AVO. If you were to vote yes on this, you will be doing the devil's work. You will also be responsible for contributing to violating both the state constitution and the federal constitution for taking it of private property rights. When our mayor ran for office and then afterwards, he stated he was eager to see what the city's consultant developed for the North Prescott area plan. Why haven't we seen any of this? And is it in contradiction to this AVO? My guess is, it is. You are now aware that there is a development agreement signed by the city in 2017 that prohibits exactly what you are being asked to approve today or tomorrow or the next meeting or the meeting after. Are you willing to be pawns in this blatant disregard at contract law? Who will ever want to work with the city in the future? In your previous handouts, the airport director always refers to the general plan and ASAP, but not current ones, only outdated such as the 2004 general plan. The last general plan was the 2015 general plan. In 2017, the development agreement, it states, in our development agreement, it states that the master plan is in compliance with both the general plan and ASAP and created an ANO, Airport Noise Overlay. The airport director has never told you that. She has misled you on all of this. These proposed noise contours are draconian. I think that they are exactly, actually more restrictive than at Sky Harbor. If you were to approve these proposed noise contours, this would approximate, again, the same number, 25% of the current geographic boundaries of the city. So let's talk about noise. If you were to overlay this noise contour on downtown Prescott with the proposed land uses, what would it look like? We all know that airplanes generate noise, but so do cars, trucks, fire trucks, ambulances, garbage trucks, delivery trucks such as Amazon and UPS, as well as barking dogs. So now, if you were to overlay the proposed noise contours over downtown Prescott, what wouldn't you see as you come into town on Gurley from Highway 69? You wouldn't see the following, as they would not be allowed under the new land use code. Houses on Mount Burning or surrounding areas, United Methodist Church, First Congregational Church, Elks Opera House, Charlotte Hall, probably not the courthouse, Whiskey Row. And as you drive out towards the airport, you wouldn't have the YMCA nor the hospital. I'll come back to that. Not to mention all the churches on Willow Creek Road. I don't think you would even be able to have Embry-Riddle University, as a matter of fact. Is this the town you would want to live in? Now, I would like to give you a little history lesson, as you all know from previous, I love history. Over 15 years ago, the city came to me to annex and as Mr. Petrie told you, we were And it was not the other way around, just to make sure everyone knows that. The city came to us. And all the annexations were city-initiated. And even, even state all that in all the documents. They were city-initiated annexation. They were not initiated by the James family or James Depot Ranch. At that time, I also gave Yaupai Regional Medical Center 100 acres at the north end of the annexation area. The hospital wanted to be further north, but the city really wanted the hospital, so agreed to move the site. It was so important to the city that they agreed to bring infrastructure to their site. I agreed to give them part of our water allotment so that the hospital could go there. I also worked with ADOT for a future roundabout. A lot of time and effort went into these decisions by all parties. Now, all of this will be impossible if this noise contours and land use are applied. I mean, the 55, as I said, is so draconian, it would take out the hospital, which everybody wants. And I don't think that is right, that you would do that. You would deprive citizens from Chino and North Prescott from having medical facilities as well. At a recent airport advisory committee meeting, the airport director stated that airline traffic was less than 2% of total operations. 23% was general aviation, forest service, and other training, and 75% was Embry-Riddle. So the question needs to be asked, why are the taxpayers of Prescott building a regional airport for Embry-Riddle? This also might be in violation of the gift clause of the Arizona Constitution, and I think the lawyers should look into that. Thank you very much. If you have any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. You went into a long list of properties, starting with houses on Senator Highway, then you included the YMCA and the hospital. What were you talking about there?
55 DNL, all the things that create traffic. If you're going to use a DNL thing as your noise contours, you wouldn't be able to have them. Because of all the traffic that comes down Gurley.
But the YMCA is, or the YMCA is on Willoughby.
I stated, as you're going out of town, you would also come by the YMCA and the hospital.
How does the YMCA create noise?
It does in all the traffic on the road.
Oh, because it tracks cars and vehicles. Okay. Thank you.
So all the noise, that's what I'm trying to say, is other things other than airplanes create noise. And all those things create, generate a lot of noise. Any other questions?
The, you mentioned the hospital property.
Speak into the microphone.
Say your name. Butch Tracy, sorry. You mentioned the hospital property. I'm wondering if George could show us or Robin on this, where that would be?
It's this area right up here.
Correct.
And this is about a line right about here.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, Kaylee?
Okay, I don't know if we have anyone else for James Depot. Do we? Okay, I believe the next would be for Dorn Homes. I had Ashley Marsh fill out a card.
Good morning. Thank you very much. Ashley Marsh with the Law Firm Damage in Burnham, 40 North Central Phoenix for your records. And I really appreciate the commission's time today. I know it's been a long morning. We've got about 30 minutes left here, so forgive my laptop here, but I've been trying to revise my comments as I go out of respect for this body's time and members of the public that would wish to give a couple comments as well. As I stated, I am Ashley Marsh. I am with Ash Dorn, representing them and the Dorn Homes builder. And they are actively building within the Deepwell Ranch Master Plan community, as this body knows, especially as Platts have come through. You've baptized, bless those Platts, seen development out there. You have a number of people from those communities in the Deepwell Ranch that are likely going to speak today. So we're a little uniquely situated. We share all of the concerns that Dr. Lichman put forth, as well as the team from the James family and the Deepwell Ranch Development. So I won't go through those host of issues that are raised with the notice, lack of notice, those vested property rights, the development agreements that are in place. But there are a couple of concerns that I would like to highlight. And those concerns predominantly concentrate around the fact that more information, frankly, is needed on how the active development is going to be effectuated and executed through this process and how it can continue because there are development agreements in place and there's active projects in place that have been held in abeyance pending a proposed, yet-to-be-adopted ordinance and overlay, which is in conflict not only with the development agreement, but with very straightforward Arizona case law, that you can't hold these projects in abeyance pending a proposed, yet-to-be-adopted overlay, which this body likely appreciates. At your last meeting, you heard that the Deepwell Ranch Master Plan would be exempted from the AVO, and those were made in prefatory comments. However, those details are still outstanding, what you heard from the comments that went before me. As the AVO is currently drafted, it does not exempt the Deepwell Ranch Master Plan. And in failing to do so, it essentially rezones these properties that are subject to the AVO, irrespective of those vested property rights. With Ash Dorn's community specifically, I think that the city's own addenda that was posted to its website on the Planning Commission page is really instructive. And I'd like to just put this on record with the two-sentence description is for the Saddlewood and Westwood communities. Three-sentence, excuse me. It says, "Your neighborhood has some existing special conditions associated with the master plan for Deepwell Ranch. The city is working with the master plan team from Deepwell to determine if there will be any effects for your area. City staff will provide you information as we have it." Well, we agree with all these statements. There are existing special conditions associated within the master plan and development agreement for the Deepwell Ranch and that more information is needed before these AVO can be adopted in consideration of the different impact zones, the DNL lines, and the litany of information that we've heard this morning and this commission has studied. Although we believe that the Deepwell Ranch should be exempted from the AVO district at a bare minimum, without the pieces of information that are alluded to, the impacts and effects to the area, it's really impossible for Ash Dorn to figure out exactly what its position is because we don't have the full proposal in front of us, because we're working together and information will be provided. So it's hard to say in a concrete and in a concise way exactly what our objections are because we're still waiting on those additional pieces of information and how exactly the Deepwell Ranch Master Plan will be exempted and how that will apply to existing communities such as Saddlewood and Westwood. I'd go even one step further and say, not only can we not ascertain a complete host of what these future rights and obligations are going to be or how those changes are going to be effectuated under the master plan, but that without these pieces of information, this commission can't ascertain the full weight of any recommendation. And I've been very pleased to hear the questions that have come out of this body. You've clearly studied this. You're taking these questions, these comments, very seriously. And additional information will be vetted in subsequent meetings and in subsequent conversations that need to happen with the development team, city attorneys, city staff to be planning. And we're excited to engage in those. But at this juncture, it's impossible to ascertain the full breadth of proposal and the ramifications that are going to be effectuated from this AVO district. So with that, I'd really like to applaud staff, actually, on taking this initiative. It's a lot of work, but with that, a lot of work needs to still be done. And I really am impressed, like I said, by this panel and this commission doing that hard work, asking those hard questions. But at this juncture, it's premature to make any type of recommendation. It's premature for Ash Dorn and for Dorn Homes to ask for any type of specific language. And we look forward to continuing the process and fully understanding how much this overlay will impact those rights and how they will protect those vested development rights and making sure that, you know, quality development that's already underway will continue to go underway pursuant to those vested rights through the development agreement and those existing conditions on properties. Thank you. Happy to entertain any questions.
No questions?
Got a question. Yes, Stan Goligoski. Yeah, full disclosure, we did have your Dornhorn property weeks ago, I think maybe a month or so ago that was proposed, and we were waiting for this overlay because we knew that something was coming up. Is there anything, and this is kind of a dual question, there's a, the biggest concern that we had, especially at the time, was the splay that comes off of impact zone four. That's the property that was brought before us. Is there anything within, that you're concerned in this AVO that has the splay that would preclude you from building in that area? Have you seen that?
Chairman, I appreciate that question. We have not seen a full picture of that splay. We've been in conversations about what that looks like. My understanding is we're out of the splay. But again, this goes back to my original point where you can't hold projects that are vested and, you know, fully entitled under development agreements and have the zoning in place under a hypothetical or a future or a to-be overlay. We're effectuating on property rights that are established, that are existing, and to hold that plat in abeyance for these conversations strictly defies what is proper under Arizona law.
Yeah, we appreciate you bringing that information to us. So when you built this, when the property in question, was the splay taken to an account and anywhere within that impact zone four where the splay overlays, do we have anything that precludes any type of building in that area that we know of, within the splay?
Chair, Commissioner, you know, our pre-plot is not up for discussion today.
Well, I'm concerned that the AVO, that we, under our current, within the overlay, what we're proposing, that we don't want, I mean, is a splay going to prevent any type of building, no matter how we decide in the future?
Yeah. And I think that's one of the questions we need to flesh out to be.
Yeah, okay. Could I ask staff on that, please?
Yes, actually, we met with the aerospace expert yesterday and they've done about a month's worth of analysis. And the good news is that we have confirmed that this small area right here, which is the proposed Aspire Homes area, is clear of the splay.
Okay, very good. Thanks, everybody.
Information as of yesterday, so thank you for that question.
Other questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, anyone else for Ash Dorn or Aspire? Okay, I will start bringing the other comment cards now, so just, again, please come up to the mic, state your name and address. Oh, yes.
I think you have my Regional Medical Center.
Yeah, okay, we'll take you. What is your name? I guess we're taking all the entities first and then citizens in the rooms and then citizens on Zoom. Go ahead.
We did send in a guest earlier.
Good job, Kaylee.
Good morning. My name is Jonathan Millet. I reside at 3370 Marigold Drive, and my neighbor's dog barks at me.
What decibel rating?
Depends if I use her name or not. The neighbor doesn't like that, so I'll try not to do that. Thank you for your time and your preparation. There's a lot of work for volunteers. I represent Yavapai Community Hospital Association. It's known as Yavapai Regional Medical Center. Most everyone here should be familiar with it. Yavapai objects to the overlay as it's currently present, presented, and also to the avocation easement because it expands on what Yavapai Regional Medical Center has already granted. Give you some background. About, a little bit before, it started in 2013. In 2013, the hospital started working with the James Foundation and Deepwell Ranches to locate their north campus. As part of Yavapai Regional Medical Center's master plan, the goal is to have a hospital that's closer to the needs. And in this case, minutes matter, whether it's an emergent care visit or whether it's just going driving to a doctor that happens to be located near the hospital, it matters. It's a cumulative effect. And so YMCA has been concerned about the, not underserving, but better serving the communities in the north. So this is North Prescott, this is Williamson Valley, this is Chino Valley, this is Paulden. And I realize that you are the commission for the city of Prescott, but this is part of YMCA's master plan. And as part of that, we entered into discussions with the city and we acquired property. We acquired a little over 173 acres, and this is anticipated to be the north campus. And to anticipate a question, no, there's nothing, there's no ground broken yet. And part of that is because the utilities and the roundabout has to be built and other infrastructure has to be extended out. And that cost will take some time. This is the master plan for that parcel. And I can zoom in if you'd like, but that's a small TV, I think. Would you like me to zoom in a bit?
We actually have that in front of us.
Okay, very good, yes. The hospital is actually in the third phase. The first and second phase would be likely either joining with other entities to do a long-term build under a long-term lease. We also have, the most significant need is actually for housing, for medical residents, for visiting doctors and nurses and staff. It's very difficult to find housing. So that's actually the top of the list of what we'd like to go ahead and start first. Now, the problem with that...
Excuse me, where would that be located on this chart?
Likely under Phase 4, Phase 1 and 2. We don't have that planned yet. Phase 3, of course, is going to be reserved for the hospital. Now, the problem with this is you'll notice in this, and I'll zoom in a little bit. So this is the parcel. It's within Zone 6. Zone 6 is the lesser impact zone, it's the less likely impact zone. And currently, under the proposed overlay, but for the fact it's within the 55 DNL zone, it would be permitted to have a hospital and residential uses. And I'm not talking about building houses, perhaps some housing for visiting, but there's also, there's related, there's related uses. For example, if you have a long-term care, if you have a nursing home, those are actually considered to be, and I'll pull up the table here real quick. This is from the packet, this is, and if there's, there might have been some changes. The little asterisk next to each of these uses, and I've highlighted where it's at, Zone 6 is the column all the way to the right. We would, YMCA would not be able to put a convalescent facility there. A nursing home would not be able to go there because it's a noise-sensitive use. That's what that asterisk indicates. So even though it's within Airport Impact Zone 6, still can't put it there. So YMCA questions tying a noise-sensitive use within Impact 6, Zone Impact 6. We question the basis for that. I don't know about you, but I've spent the night at a hospital, usually sitting by someone's bedside. They don't get much sleep. It's pretty loud at a hospital. And yes, there are some noise-sensitive uses, but as a measure of annoyance, I think, I think it's not a good idea to tie noise to the permitted use within Zone 6. Second, I would submit to you that most of the hospitals in the valley would be not permitted under the noise-sensitive use because most of them are located near the freeways. Freeways generated a lot of noise, and I'm not an expert on this, but I'm pretty sure that they probably developed, they probably generate more than 55 DNL over time. I'm thinking Deer Valley, I'm thinking a number of banner hospitals that are right off the freeway. So we question that. We also question applying the 55 or 60 level when these are more experimental noise limits and not actually broadly applied by the FAA. So the difficulty in going, just, this is the main complaint. You'll notice that hospitals are not permitted. The Yavapai Regional Medical Center would not have purchased, because we purchased one-third of it. We are grateful for the James Foundation Depot Ranch for contributing as a gift, two-thirds of the price. We wouldn't have purchased this property. It's basically become if this is applied and if YMCA's uses are not exempted, we're not going to be able to do anything but maybe have medical office buildings there. Now, this is contrary to what the development agreement has said. So this is, and I've zoomed out a little bit, but let me zoom in. This is Section 4.1 of the development agreement between the hospital and the city of Prescott gives the hospital a vested right to develop the property using the future uses, the densities, and the intensities of uses contemplated under the zoning, which is business-regional, and as reflected on Exhibit D. This is Exhibit D. I'm not going to go through them all, but you'll see that it's very detailed. They're all medical and they're related to medical uses. And the goal is to basically provide a medical campus that makes it easy for the residents to not only get to the hospital, but get their other medical needs taken care of. This would eliminate some of the congestion that you have when you're driving down the road on Willow Creek Road and you always, every, any time of day, there's someone that's headed to the hospital. By locating this near the airport, once it's, once it's built, and granted, it will take some time, it will eliminate some of that. Finally, the development agreement has very specific provisions that say and prohibit this, this is something the city agreed to, from applying future land use rules that limit the uses of the development. Similarly, under Section 4.11, it also limits further zoning that would once again prohibit the hospital from actually making use. So on the basis of those promises, the hospital purchased the property. More planning has continued. We're excited with the development that's currently happening because the hospital frankly does piggyback on developers. Because the hospital can't pay to bring in the infrastructure five miles, can't pay to build a roundabout on its own, and if, and talking about donuts because it's almost lunchtime. When you exempt all of residential property that's near the hospital's property, if for some reason it's not exempted, and that is you can't put residential property and maybe it's very limited what can be built there, what you do is create a donut. And we're the whole, we're in the middle, but there's this, a blank zone around us. And to be able to get to our property to make it actually so that we can bring in partners, that we can build a hospital, we either have to come up with that 20 million plus on our own or we just wait. And I, for one, would rather that it not wait because I think that we do have a need and we will have a growing need for more medical facilities. For the most part, main campus is fairly built out. There is room in East Campus, but it's pretty difficult to ask people to commute all the way to Prescott Valley. So we request more time to be able to discuss this and have some changes made so that we can actually make this not only viable, but that YMCA will have assurance that it can use its property.
Questions? Thank you, sir. Appreciate the input. We have...
Okay.
Are we individuals now?
We have individuals now. I'm actually going to read two comments and then I'll have folks come up to the podium, again, state your name and address and speak into the microphone. You might have to bring it down.
Kaylee, before you do, how many comment cards do you have, roughly?
About 10.
Tammy, while she's looking at that, how many people do we have on Zoom who are requesting to speak?
At this time, we don't have anybody's hands raised, and I don't know how many people are in the other room that are wanting to speak.
Okay, thank you.
Should I proceed? Okay, so I'm going to read two cards. So one, her name is Lynn Garrard, and I apologize if I didn't read that properly. She said, she is from Saddlewood subdivision. "I didn't pay top dollar for my house less than five months ago to have this happen. A possible loss of home value due to downzoning. It's an investment as well as a place to live. Also, sufficient notice was not given to the public less than two weeks when the city has had this in the works for some time." And then I have a comment card from a Steve on Barn Owl. Steve, I don't know if you want me to read this. You wrote on the back, so I'll go ahead and do that. It's very short. "To the commission, please be a good neighbor. The pendulum swings both ways."
Well, that's some ominous stuff right there.
Okay. All right. And what I'll do is I'll announce the speakers in batches of three. That way, the others can queue up while the first is speaking. So I have Mrs. C. Garthwaite, a Richard Garthwaite, and Kim Liddon or Luden.
Can you hear me?
Yes. There you go.
I'm Mrs. Cinderah Garthwaite. This is Richard Garthwaite behind me, my husband. We live in 1361 Warbler Way in Saddlewood subdivision. I just think that there hasn't been a personal, a personalized message to this great group here that we have. Thank you again for letting us speak. We've heard a lot of numbers and a lot of things that are happening that are legalese. I'm going to put a personal touch on this. These are people and these aren't structures. I've heard it said that these were structures in the way of this overlay. We are homes. We are people. Don't forget that, please. I have a lot of friends in our neighborhoods that we've been talking about this only for the last three days. We did not get a little card, whatever that was, in the mail. We didn't receive it. The only way we knew was from Dorn Homes, and I just happened to be talking to them that day. So please remember that, too. These are neighborhoods of people. We have in our neighborhood and Westwood, we have young families with new babies and children that came here and scraped and scraped to try and get these homes and live a better life for their family. They came here for the schools. They came here because it is a small city. If we all wanted a big city airport, we can go and live in Phoenix. But we don't. We're here. All of these, we have friends in Walden, we have friends over in Pinion Oaks. All of these people came here and live here because they want a small city, not a big metropolis. They don't care about a big airport. They don't want a big airport. Please listen to them. This is your job to listen to the people. This airport is not needed. This expansion of this airport is not needed. It is wanted by somebody who may want a lot of money for this city. There are hundreds of millions of dollars in this project that we understand could be coming to the city. That is not what we want. We don't need it. We don't have the infrastructure in this city. We need more police. We need more fire department. We need more hospitals. And yes, this hospital is needed in this north section of the city. You cannot grow south of here. It's surrounded by mountains. You cannot grow to the west of here. It is surrounded by mountains. You cannot grow to the east of here. It is surrounded by mountains. Therefore, the only expansion for homes and schools and churches is to the north where you have a regional small airport. Leave it that way. Nobody needs five flights a day out of here. Nobody wants it. That is all that you need to understand, really. It's either about money or it's about the people who you represent. And that is the homeowners. There are old people in our neighborhood, I'm one, who scraped a lot of money together to try and make sure we could live in Prescott. And here we are. This is our retirement home. We can't afford to have 20% of it devalued because we're in a non-conforming lot. I am in real estate and I know you don't want to have a non-conforming lot. You cannot sell it. People will walk away and they'll go somewhere else. That is a big deal to all of these homeowners. You can't devalue our homes. You have people in our neighborhood who are working and they come home. This is their home. Did we know we were near an airport? Absolutely. And I, we visited Prescott many times so we could see and know what is around this airport. And we accepted the two flights a day that we have of commercial, and we didn't know, we weren't told, about Embry-Riddle and how many flights a day there are at this airport. But you know what? That is it and that is all. We do not need to expand that. Embry-Riddle doesn't need to expand that either. And if they want to, and if you all want to, you can buy the land to the east of that airport. The northeast is filled with open land. There are no homes there. There are no businesses there. Look it up and look at the map. You do not need to extend this runway to the south or the west over homes that are already here and limiting homes that we were promised. We were promised a grocery store eventually and homes, neighbors. We were promised schools. We have one already. The Trinity School is there, but we were promised a bigger high school, which is much needed in this city. Please remember all these things when you are considering this situation. I thank you and I appreciate your time and listening.
Thank you, ma'am.
Dawn, I wanted to check with you. I heard mention of a 12 o'clock mark. Is that a...
What we're going to do is we have three people in line right now.
Sure.
We will hear all those parties on that.
Okay.
And then we'll probably end the meeting and make sure we want to invite everybody to come back to our next meeting, even to come back to our next meeting, even if you've spoken already, but to, we want to get input from all parties. It's a time factor right now. But the three people we've already slotted, one has spoken, two more to come, we will hear those.
I'm Richard Garthwait, same address. Mine's already been answered, really. It's how the city...
Okay, just speak into the microphone.
Mine's really already been answered, was how the city thought they were going to compensate the homeowners for taking property values from them. And it's been pointed out that they haven't even thought about that. So that's something that needs to be addressed if you go ahead with something ridiculous like this.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarity, if the commission desires to continue to go, you can continue to go.
Thoughts?
We're going to have another meeting. I'd say people who are here. I'm open.
Okay. We'll go ahead and continue and take all the ones that we have in here.
Okay.
But we have another room, too.
Let me take a five-minute break.
Oh, we'll keep going. Okay, so hello, sir. Are you, oh, is this Ken Luden?
Yes.
Luden, Ken Luden, hello.
Yes. My name is Ken Luden. I live at 5640 North Williamson Valley Road. I am the director of the Margaux Fontaine Academy. We are moving our world headquarters here to Prescott. We are under the authority, no, this has some problems. Hang on a second. We are under the authority. Worldwide, we have, we have locations on five continents. We are under the authority of the Crown in England. To move to an area and provide education, and that's what I'd like to address in terms of the impact of this proposed idea, I would like to talk about education and its impact on education, which of course is the children that go to school. It is their families. It is their parents. It is the faculty. It is the administration and all of the families of all of those people. We will not be bringing many, many, many people. We only, the total operation is 86 employees for the academy main campus, and we are going to aim to have at least 60 to 70 or more percent of those be local people who already have the credentials to be able to teach. To be able to operate in an area under the authority that we have to address and satisfy, you have to be far enough away from a large metropolitan area that families are comfortable letting their children be the number of hours they need for world-class, top-tier education in performed fine arts. In addition, you need to be close enough to a large metropolitan area so that you can have major artists, major events, so that the children are exposed to the real thing so that they know what they're aspiring to. You also have to have transportation available within the area, and there has to be a local In addition to that, you need to have interest. In terms of, I've learned a new phrase coming here in Prescott and buying a house. It's called skin in the game. You need to have interest, which in Arizona is called skin in the game, from the public when it's an idea to move it here. You have to have people who are willing to put down money, willing to put in time, willing to volunteer, willing to work for England to approve. Prescott was approved. Part of that approval, and this happened in 2018, part of that approval was based on the potential for being able to develop our upper school facility ultimately in North Prescott out by the airport. The James Family Foundation has offered the gift of land. We've gone into planning. We've been planning for several years now to develop some sort of a facility there, and that would include many of the things that was on the list that the gentleman who spoke from over there had, like library, learning centers, et cetera. Our families, our faculty are not wealthy people. Like the lady who just spoke, they have to really scrape together to be able to afford a home. The 20% of our faculty, administration, and staff that are going to be moving here, some of them have already actually gone to the, I can't remember the name of the other woman who spoke about the real estate development. Which one?
Dorn.
Dorn. We have already had meetings with Dorn Home of our executive director, who's going to be moving here with her, family of three young children from Australia. The problem that I have, or the thing that I would like to talk about, is the fact of education. Prescott is growing. I know that there are radically opposing views about growth and development of this, but I think that they're radically opposing views on every subject everywhere in America right now. So that does not surprise me. What surprises me is that this overlay, this proposed overlay prohibits things that are so beneficial to the population, to the citizens that live here, and in terms of putting Prescott on the map, and I don't mean for development, I mean as a location to go to. Where the Fontaine Academy is, people from all over the world are aware of. When we announced that we were going to open our, move our world headquarters from New York to Prescott, I got emails, letters, phone calls from everywhere on earth, people saying, "That is incredible. We want to go." They looked it up. They saw what the landscape is like. People are so excited about this. The people in the town are very excited about what we're bringing. And yet, if this is to be authorized, if this is to be embraced as it is written currently, as the gentleman from the hospital pointed out, very little is possible. And very little is possible because of a presumed potential fear in the future that might not do well with people giving grants. But as the woman who just spoke said, it is about the people who live here. It's about the education of the children. We are working with PUSD. We're working with Yavapai College. We've already created a fine art dance degree program in conjunction with the college that's going to be starting up in September. We also have located our downtown facility at the Mile High Middle School and a temporary upper school facility at Washington School. That upper school facility is then to move to North Prescott by the airport, and we are looking with all of the other fine art performance groups in Prescott, of which you have many that are very, very good, including the Philharmonic, which just Sunday had an incredible concert at Yavapai Performing Arts. I hope that some of you could have gone to that. It was truly amazing. At any rate, we are planning on, by the grace and the goodwill and the big generosity of the James Family Foundation, we are planning on building a fine arts village, not a place where people live, but like a hospital campus, a place where there is education, there's library resources, there are lots of facilities for these groups to be able to rehearse and perform. That is my pitch. Now, the fine arts is not for everybody. I get that. Believe me, I was one of six children, and I was the black sheep because I was in the fine arts. I understand that. But what I also understand is that everywhere there is a major fine arts institution, the economic impact of that institution is tremendous. And I have gone all over the world, speaking to city councils and organizations of businessmen about the economic impact of the fine arts, and I'd be happy to do that here. I spoke to the mayor about it. I proposed it. He didn't seem very interested, but maybe I can sweeten him up on interest for that. At any rate, I want to say that, the only other thing I want to say about noise, I sat, before I was listening, I made a list of opera houses that I have performed in that were right next to airports in my career. And I, just sitting here, came up with 20. And I keep remembering, oh, and that's right. And when we were in Italy, there was that airplane that came right over. The only time sound has ever been a factor was at the Kennedy Center. We were in a rehearsal, and it was the day that they were taking the 747 with the new space shuttle on it and flying it around different cities. We were all at the window. Yes, that made a big noise. They did a flyover. But other than that, I have performed hundreds and hundreds of times in theaters right next to airports, and there has never been any dip in audience attendance, any people that are highly irritated. On the stage, we make a lot of noise. Our orchestras make a lot of noise. Maybe just our noise was greater. But I just wanted to say that that is, in terms of prohibiting performing arts because of perceived potential noise problems, well, as an artist, that's absurd, but as a citizen, that really is not relevant. Anyway, that's all I have to say. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Which, you know, I'm sorry, maybe you showed it, but where's this proposed facility? Where's it going?
So we are, we are talking about land, and we have, we're trying to figure out where it can be placed so that it can happen.
All right, so you don't have a specific...
No, no, we have, the area is, well, let me answer your question. In zone six.
Okay.
Right in the middle of zones.
Thank you very much.
Other questions? Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. And I got another comment card that the individual had to leave, so I'm going to read it. Daniel Lee, 5954 Wilkinson. He just says, "Does my temporary permit allow me to continue to build? Do we fall in, into legal nonconforming?" Okay, next three speakers, James Huffman, Sandy Griffiths, Darrell Ostermiller.
Jim Huffman, 1654 Geddes View, Prescott, 86, excuse me, 86301. Kind of dried out here.
That should be here.
Anyway, good afternoon, commissioners and everyone in the audience. I am Jim Huffman, a member of the Airport Advisory Committee. I will read a statement written to the Planning and Zoning Commission, signed by Mike Geddy, our committee chairman. This statement reflects the unanimous position of our seven-member Airport Advisory Committee. Here we are again, still discussing how to protect the Prescott Regional Airport from encroachment within well-established overflight areas. Specifically, we are here to address residential encroachment as well as precarious placement of sensitive uses near the airport instead of within more appropriate areas of our beautiful city. Airport protection is an extremely important subject and has been extensively addressed in virtually every city planning document since 2001. I think you are all familiar with some of these plans, the airport-specific area plan, the airport's land use plan, and the voter-approved 2015 general plan. While encroachment concerns are highlighted in each of these documents, the lack of implementation and enforcement of repeatedly recommended land use needs and solutions has been problematic. This became evident with the latest areas, airport-specific area plan revision in 2017 when commercial development and open space were publicized and assured at public meetings, but now seemed to be of little interest to the developers. How this uncontrollable level of development, flexibility in the approach path of one of the nation's busiest airports was not understood or caught by the council remains both curious and unfortunate. Nobody really wants to infringe upon the legal rights of landowners and developers to profit economically on the use of their property. However, the reason that we have zoning laws is also to protect the rights of those entities bordering on the developments, in this case, the Prescott Regional Airport. Prescott's inclusive zoning laws have failed to provide the necessary protection to both the airport and the community, hence the need for the airport vicinity overlay. Yes, you can require builders and developers to upgrade windows, doors, and insulation to a higher standard to mask the noise of the home. That's great inside the home, but does not support opening windows to enjoy our weather or sitting on the patio to relax with neighbors and friends. Under the long-established traffic patterns of this nearly 100-year-old airport, new homeowners will predictably become annoyed or even become activists against this airport. This could result in the loss of very competitive funding needed for future airport improvements to benefit air travelers, encourage business growth, promote job creation, and optimize aerial firefighting support for our region. Although you can legally advise new homeowners to expect aircraft overflight noise near an airport, we have strong reservations that this is being done properly. Impacted homeowners should receive the required navigation easements and disclosures early in the buying process. However, some buyers have reported that these documents were either not clearly provided or were provided at a time when buyers were buried in their final paperwork. We support providing timely, useful, fair disclosure information to prospective buyers and renters. However, having said that, the overarching concern is the future viability of the airport and assuring it can continue in its hugely important role in providing the citizens of Yavapai County connectivity to the national air transportation system. Our community wants and deserves access to the national global air transportation system and not be dependent on I-17 to Phoenix to enjoy that access. The planned commercial service runway extension will facilitate that connection, but to gain the necessary federal support for this extensive airport improvement, we must demonstrate our local commitment to protecting this regional asset by ensuring compatible land use planning near the airport. Make no mistake, federal funding comes with strings attached, including maintaining compatible land use to ensure the continued normal operation of this airport both now and into the future. I must reiterate how important it is to make protecting the future of Prescott Regional Airport a top priority for the citizens of the city of Prescott and across Yavapai County. It is our door to the rest of the, rest of the world and to a $195 million economic generator for our community. We have this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to get this right. There will no doubt be challenges along the way, but if all parties will negotiate in good faith, I am convinced of a very bright future for this valuable asset, the Prescott Regional Airport. Our Airport Advisory Committee represents hundreds of years of aviation and aerospace experience in military, commercial, and general aviation around the globe. We want to make it clear that this body unanimously supports the creation and implementation of an airport vicinity overlay as essential to the future of our airport, and thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Well, either Sandy Griffiths or Darrell Ostermiller.
Mr. Chair Michaelman, Vice Chair Gambo G., Commissioners. I'm Sandy Griffiths, Yavapai County Contractors Association, and I appreciate your time. We always talk about everyone's hometown. We talk about one community together. We see that in our press releases, our public relations, our marketing material for the city of Prescott. That's not what this AVO is doing. I feel that it is tearing apart and breaking down our community instead of building us up and making us one. The AVO should not be all about noise and desiring to move our land... The AVO should not be all about noise and desiring to move our landowners into another DNL area, which is inappropriate. And I will say that one of the best noises taking place right now in our community on a daily basis, those chirping quesadillas. But they're really not quesadillas, they're cicadas. I call them quesadillas.
That won't go on the record.
And this morning, their DNL level was 55. Our AVO, I'm also concerned that it's being brought forward out of fear, and that's not how we should ever have to operate. Let me back up. Chair Michaelman, I only want a few minutes, and I promise not to filibuster. I forgot to bring that forward. We should not be in fear of highly agitated people and noise levels. The world is full of complaints every day on a daily basis. We see it, we hear it, we live among it. We should not be what the AVO is attempting to make us, and that's a Gestapo for tree heights and declaring that vegetation, vegetative plantings and natural growth impacts could be grounds for denying permits. It says it right there in the AVO. It could affect our citizens, their landscaping, their tree plantings. I have not seen any vegetative plantings or natural tree growth impacts that are overtaking our land, except for one invasive species, that pesky elm tree. So, we really need to work together. We're not going to have a harsh jungle overtaking our airport runways. We have to work together with our community, our citizens, our landowners, Emery Riddle, the citizens that are here with us today, the homeowners. We all care deeply and desperately about this AVO, and I feel that it could be overreaching in its current state. We've heard a lot of great information this morning. It's a challenge to all of us, to each and every one of you, again, to our businesses, our landowners, our citizens, our schools. And I know that by working together, and I seriously mean working together, we have got to be boots on the ground, working together, and communicate. We can and should come up with an AVO that is awesome, collectively working for this community and our citizens. So, thank you for your time.
All right.
My name is Darrell Ostermiller, 13850 North Spanish Barb Lane, Prescott, Arizona 86305. I never thought I'd be up here in Prescott with a Orange County lawyer, and, and I must, I must start this by saying I was deeply offended by the lawyer who had any implication with Pearl Harbor to this particular issue. My mother and father were both in World War II in New Guinea. I'm a Vietnam veteran helicopter pilot, and to infer that anything, this is, anything close to Pearl Harbor is very offensive to me and other veterans. Today, I represent the Prescott Airport Users Association. We have over 100 members. We represent just about every category on the airport. Prescott Airport Users Association has over 100 members representing all categories of airport users. We feel compelled to bring up several points in support of the need to adopt a clear and enforceable airport vicinity overlay district. For more than a decade, the city has had well-established plans for airport area protection, subbuffet, to ensure compatible land use. However, it is important that we now take action to fully adopt these plans into an AVO district and assure both protection of the airport and Prescott residents' quality of life. The AVO must contain protections to ensure the right of overflight, accident zone protection, one-engine departure protections, obstacle height restrictions to reasonably allow for aircraft overflight and noise generation. Both now and in the future, air traffic is returning to the higher, is returning to the higher traffic levels reached in the 1990s and early 200s. If these AVO protections are not promptly codified, we believe that citizen activism against the airport is inevitable. This will likely jeopardize the future of federal-state funding needed for airport development and serious undermine the future viability of the only commercial service airport in Yavapai County. Unfortunately, the Deepwell Ranch Development Agreement has been found to be seriously flawed, and it lacks the guaranteed open space as well as reasonable airport protections for encroachment. There is no need to put childcare centers, schools, churches, or homes in the impact zones of a busy airport. Without these protections, residents will have reduced quality of life. However, the airport and the community do not need to be in opposition. There is enough open space in this community to create reasonable buffer around the airport and simultaneously ensure the continued health, safety, and welfare of our citizens. We encourage all stakeholders to use common sense and not act out of obligation to landowners and developers, some of whom have had done great things for our community. These individuals still have the ability to make reasonable changes to their plans, thereby ensuring needed protections for the airport as well as their current and future residents. We ask that these key landowners and developers work with the city to mutually protect this asset for the well-being of generations of citizens. Support for the airport means support for more airline destinations, a welcoming environment for business and recreational flying, and better facilities for aerial firefighting operations. In the area of noise, it's important to recognize that if a decades-old threshold of significance, measure of 65 DNL is inadequate to ensure quality of life for most citizens. Without carefully considering both safety and noise impacts as well as the projected future growth of the airport, citizen activism could eventually result in citizen opposition to future airport development as well as citizen demand to limit normal airport operations, eliminate or shorten runways, and for outright airport closure. Look at Santa Monica, Whitman Airport, and Reed Hillfell, all from California, to see the predictable negative impact of improper land use, planning, and adequate airport protection. We understand that this effort and process is challenging. We thank Director Sabata, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the Prescott City Council for their collective leadership in passing AVO. This effort will preserve a major economic generator for the community and our only local access to National Air Transportation System. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next three, TK Moran, Byron Tabit, and Brian Harper. Those are actually our last three in person, including the overflow room.
Okay.
Okay.
My name is TK Moran, 1420. I'm at this lane, Saddlewood, Prescott, Arizona 86305. I appreciate you guys extending this and allowing me to speak. I agree with Sandy. We should be able to come to some kind of communal agreement and make this work for all of us. I'm not opposed to progress, to say, but when it negatively impacts my property value and my future, I have to take issue, and that's the reason I'm here. I didn't know anything about this or the details, and I'm still on the fence. Based on what I've heard today, it could go either way. But as of right now, I'm opposed to it. Noise has been beat to death. I took a few notes. I'm not sure the difference between we have an ANO and an AVO. It doesn't matter at this point. Some of the things about the AVO, the timeframes for the occupancy in the area of active gods and destruction are pretty aggressive due to current pandemic and supply chain and labor shortages. 24 months to occupy a building and then you have to foreclose on it, because if you can't meet that deadline, I think is a little aggressive. Negative impact, property value. Legal conformity, that's, that's, that's a term I'm not really familiar with, but it doesn't sound good for me as a property owner. The other thing that I have issue with is the dates that were proposed in the proposal. I heard 2001, 2015, 2017, and 2022. Okay, Saddlewood was established and granted or sold by the James family in 2017. That was when established. Those houses were built, there's a development agreement, and now to come back and say it's going to change zoning and negatively impact my property value, I just don't think that's right. I feel bait and switch. I was in the process of buying this home for two years. It's our retirement home. I planned, I did a lot of research, and we chose Prescott to come and spend the rest of our life, and I just, I just don't feel good about this right now. So, I hope you continue this, and you take your time and make the right decision. Thank you.
I don't know if I'm next or not, but I'm Byron Tabit, 1366 Northridge Drive, Prescott. Thank you, guys, for your volunteer efforts. They're considerable, and they're appreciated. Thank you, George and Dr. Sabata, for your diligent work on this as well. I've learned a lot in just watching and observing this process develop. I'd like to give a few comments. I wear neither a suit nor a pitchfork here, so, but I do want to just provide a few thoughts from 30,000 feet, not to use a pun that's, that was really bad, I'm sorry. But my name is Byron Tabit. I represent Prescott, I'm a resident of Prescott and here to speak on behalf of Canyon Bible Church as well. We're a church that's been serving the Prescott community for the last eight years. We gather each week in leased space for our weekly worship. We've been looking earnestly for a church home over the last several years. In the spring of 2021, we began a study of the possibility of purchasing 15 acres on the east corner of Willow Creek Road and Warrior Way directly across from Trinity School. Thank you, Robin. Noting its proximity to the airport, our initial due diligence included speaking with Robin, Dr. Sabata, Airport Director, and receiving maps of airport influence areas, much of which you've seen already on the screen and overflight data. And this was very, this was a very helpful start for us. In addition, considerable time and effort was also made to speak with neighboring residents of Saddlebrook as well as existing businesses beneath the flight path, beneath the flight paths of the two main runways. I also spoke with people who worked at Trinity School across the street, specifically as it regards to noise from aircraft overflight. So then I spent considerable time reviewing the history of the development and ultimate approval of Deepwell Plan, Master Plan, and the land use groups in 2017, of which you're very familiar. It's my understanding that open space requirements, permitted land uses, and airport protections were reviewed with the city and the airport staff extensively with final agreement to rezone 1,800 acres of Deepwell Ranch later that year. As you know, this timeframe included the initial vision proposed in February of 2017, multiple stakeholder meetings, probably some of which you were involved with, a formal request to rezone in June of 2017, seven Prescott, seven P&amp;Z Commission hearings, and four city council meetings resulting in final approval of Deepwell Master Plan rezoning. So we began working with Sun State to develop a PAC proposal to the city in August of 2021. Airport Director Sabata's comments delivered at that time stated that our proposed project parcel lie in Zone Six, according to the Airport Specific Area Plan ASAP, adopted as part of the land use plan in 2013. It was also noted in these comments that commercial/employment uses were permitted. And in addition to this collection of comments, it was noted that the Deepwell Ranch Master Plan agreements adopted in 2017 were allowed for places of worship. So after site plan concepts and initial design drawings began in earnest, we signed a purchase agreement with Chamberlain Development Prescott LLC this spring. Since nearly a year had passed, our second PAC submitter dated 6/1922 now included comments stating that we lie within Zone Three for Runway 3R and Zone Four for Runway 3L. New comments now started, stated that the church was identified again as this language you've heard, non-compatible use for Zone One through Five. Interestingly, five days later, on June 14th, the city council met in study session to receive a proposal from Airport Director Sabata on the new AVO and amendment to the existing land development code. This presentation led off with an overview of the federal airport grant assurances processed, and specifically grant assurances Number 20 and Number 21, which you've probably become very familiar with. I invite you, if you haven't watched this online, to do so. As you might imagine, I have watched the proceedings and subsequent public discussions since then with great interest. My concerns today reflect a concern for the legal standing that the city has as it regards changes to the previous land development code, land use agreements, and master plan agreements signed and made effective in 2017. I know that you are well aware and will be deliberating with the city council regarding the potential legal entanglements that this proposed AVO has for the stakeholders involved. Points of clarification that I would like the commission and the council to consider in this AVO, if it is adopted, include, number one, a transparent explanation to the citizens of how this proposed overlay district comports with both state and federal law. You've heard that commented on previously. Number two, an explanation to the residents of Saddlewood, Westwood, and adjoining communities of the potential second and third order impacts for any proposed changes to DNL contour lines previously drawn for the Deepwell Ranch Master Plan, including the, as we've heard this morning, the legal nonconforming impact on property values. And number three, potential costs to the city for reimbursement to the stakeholders for new open space requirements potentially. I'm mindful in this regard to the specifics of any OEI SPLAY adjustments to open space requirements for new and existing projects at Deepwell Ranch. Planning, consistency, predictability for multimillion-dollar projects matter for the stakeholders involved and will be essential for the future good of our city and the flourishing of confidence in our city leadership. This has been a learning experience for us all. We, as citizens, are looking to use for leadership on this issue. Please carefully consider these significant second and third order consequences as you deliberate the changes involved in this AVO proposal before you. And finally, as you consider this AVO as a significant change to the Prescott Land Development Code, may you and the city council find the foundation of your decisions predicated on what is just, legal, and morally right. And thank you again for your kindness in these considerations.
Thank you, sir.
Brian Harris.
Yeah, so you know what? With respect for everything you had mentioned earlier about if someone said something, I'll repeat it. So, all the comments that I was going to say have been said.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Well, not quite. We do have, well, maybe, Tammy, do we have anyone on Zoom?
At this time, we do not have anybody on Zoom.
Okay, so any more public comment? Okay, that was the end.
Okay.
Does Chairman have a question?
So, we, we had somebody, oh, never mind. Never mind.
Tom Riley. Chairman, you had said we were going to have another meeting, and so I assume that the public hearing will be extended into our next meeting, in case there are people...
Can I make that motion?
Oh, okay.
Look, I have a motion for them.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, before you take any action, first, on behalf of staff, I think we want to express to anyone who's still here our appreciation for bringing their comments and letting us know what their positions are. It's invaluable to making sure that what we've moved forward with is something that's palatable for the majority of the citizens here. So, thank you. So, thank you. We do have quite a number of comments that were made during the meeting today that staff would like to have some opportunity to look at, so we certainly support continuing your public hearing to a future meeting to allow us to respond back.
Now, Ted.
And when is our next public meeting?
I believe our next regularly scheduled meeting is September 8th.
September 8th.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, but a few comments before I do. First of all, it's great to see the council chambers full and to know that we had 120 overflow, because, you know what, with the planning commission, we have a real challenge, and that challenge goes kind of about the way we work. When a proposal comes before us, the city staff goes out and notifies those people close by. And in this effort, they've notified 2,500 people, and that's why the council chambers are full. But a lot of times, the stakeholders go beyond the people that are notified. People that live in Haciapa, that live in Enchanted Canyon, that live in Forest Trails, that live at the ranch, that live at Yavapai Hills, to name a few, are stakeholders in this issue because they are users of the airport. And it's not just Prescott. As Johnison mentioned earlier with the hospital, he was talking about Chino and Payson, Chino Valley and Prescott Valley and Dewey are probably stakeholders in this issue. Earlier, Sandy mentioned this divides us. I tend to differ. You see, these issues have been laying out there for a while, and I'm glad that we finally are transparent enough to bring them to the forefront. Now, I've sat here and I've watched expressions, I've heard people draw analogies to Pearl Harbor and Nazis, and I contend that this is what we're here for, to broach these issues. It reminds me of a meeting years ago in business, and it was much more heated than this. And at the end, a guy named Jimmy Duke once said, you know, and this probably describes this meeting today, we're more confused than we were when we started, but we're confused about issues on a higher level and in more detail. And that means that what we've heard today from the suits, from the citizens, was good input, and I think that lends us the opportunity to postpone or to continue this meeting till September 8th, where we have a chance to digest what we've heard. I've been taking notes all along, and to process that information. But I would also say that although I'm not going to ask the staff to notice 100,000 people that constitute Chino and Prescott and Prescott Valley and Dewey, I'd like to hear more input from all the true stakeholders in this issue. So with that, I move that we continue the meeting, this discussion, to the next meeting on September 8th.
We have a motion.
And leaving the public hearing open.
Open, and leaving the public hearing open.
Second.
We have a motion, second for the discussion.
Question. Would it be possible for staff to, at the next meeting, either before or after public comment, to kind of explain, give a little bit more depth on the city's work moving forward, engaging it and letting us know how, because there's so many different issues that are out there that are unresolved, and for us to try to move this thing forward with unresolved issues is irresponsible, in my opinion.
We certainly can. One of the things that I just mentioned a moment ago is we appreciate the opportunity to respond to some of the comments that we've heard today because we think that that can help clarify things for you. And obviously, I can talk about anything for however long you want me to.
There may be limits there.
Me too.
Go back to the motion.
Yeah, we got a motion, we got a second.
Any further discussion about the motion? Katie, please.
Butch Tracy.
Yes.
Tom Riley.
Yes.
Susan Graham.
Yes.
Stan Galagowski.
Yes.
Thomas Hutchison.
Yes.
Ted Gamboge.
You betcha.
Don Michaelman.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Before we go on with the rest of the meeting, I want to thank everybody who took their time to come here and give us your thoughts. We are still going to be receptive to having input at our next meeting, and which we may or may not vote on this, we may have to have another meeting beyond this, too. There is no time factor for us to make a decision on our recommendation. So, again, thank you. We need to have this input for us to make a decision on that. Okay. Update, staff? Announcements or anything?
Mr. Chairman, we had three site plan review items that this body reviewed and made recommendations on. Go to the city council this Tuesday. Chair was there to answer questions, if there were any, from council. All three of those items were approved by council. So, these were various site plans, a hospital on 69, a, I'm not sure what to call it.
Medical clinic?
The medical clinic, but a group of trailers, if you want to call it that.
Airstream.
Airstream Village. All approved by council, so that's the only update I have.
Okay. Then the meeting is adjourned.